Good evening. I'm calling the Boxborough Planning Board meeting of October 30th, 2025 to order. As always, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom and can be accessed via our Planning Board Agenda. The Agenda also has a simple call-in number that can be phoned in as well if you're not using a computer. So to start off, I will take a roll call as I see you. Mark White.
Wade, present.
Chris Doughty.
Doughty, present.
Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz, present.
And this Rich. Rich, I see you too. Rich Gazardi.
Gazardi, present.
Thank you. And Werner, present. So at this point, I would like to open it up to public comment for items that are not listed on the Agenda right now. So if you have a comment not related to anything listed on the Agenda, please raise your hand. Or if you're dialing in by phone, you can dial *9 and that will get you through as well. That'll raise your hand. Okay, I am not seeing any hands raised. It is 7:02. We have to reopen a meeting at 7:05. Goodness, we don't have any low-hanging fruit to tick off this evening, it seems. These probably are likely larger discussions. Would you agree, Alec?
Certainly more than two to three minutes, yes.
Yeah, okay. So we will just need to sit tight for two minutes before we open our public hearing.
I will note for the board, you do have minutes in your administrative business section. However, as the chairperson has already pointed out, that's not listed on your agenda tonight. We pared this one down to just the necessities to help expedite and keep things running smoothly. So do know that your minutes are included. You can start reviewing those ahead of your next meeting. As well as the upcoming Planning Board meeting schedule is fairly flushed out and up to date with our anticipated schedule for November 17th and December 1st.
Okay, 7:05 according to my clock. At this point, I'd like to open the Beaverbrook Road OSCD Special Permit in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A in the Boxborough Zoning Bylaw 7.5 Open Space Commercial Development and 2.3 Special Permits. The Boxborough Planning Board will conduct a public hearing to review the application submitted by property owner Campagnelli Trigate LLC to amend OSCD 97-01 and OSCD 0101. So I just, I think Alec kind of alluded to this, but I did want to make note that this meeting was added to the Planning Board's existing meetings to accommodate the applicant's request for a dedicated meeting for this application so that we can focus primarily on that, on this application before us tonight. So the whole idea behind this will be for the board to discuss comments that have been made and edit the existing document decision accordingly. We do have a few other Agenda items that got snuck into our Agenda. So I wanted to try to complete this discussion by 9:30 this evening so that we can finish up with the others. So that's my goal. And if we need to continue, we continue. But that's what I'd like to try to stick to if we can. Hopefully, we can move through things pretty quickly. I also want to make sure, I know we're not voting quite yet. We've got a lot of discussions that happen. But I did want, before I move into public comment, to make it clear that this application requires a supermajority vote for the board for approval. So that means four out of five. And now, at this point, I would like to open it up for public comments. So if you have any public comments that are out there about this particular hearing, please raise your hand at this point. I would love to let everybody have the opportunity to ask questions. So I'm going to try to limit folks to two minutes so that we can move into the meat of this discussion as well. So either raise your hand via the app or press *9 to raise your hand. Catherine Davies, I'm seeing you first. Please.
Hi, Catherine Davies. I'm the Chair of the Boxborough Sustainability Committee. And I just wanted to apologize for not submitting a letter sooner, but I am here to sort of provide the Sustainability Committee's comments on the process that's been going on. First of all, we just appreciate the Planning Board's efforts to encourage the project proponent to address sustainability and resilience. I would say we are concerned that Campagnelli continues to defer like really meaningful commitments to future site plan review stages despite the scale and long-term impact of this development. So given the impacts that we have concerns about, we strongly recommend that the Planning Board require Campagnelli to build in compliance with the Massachusetts Specialized Stretch Energy Code as a condition of the special permit. This code is designed to accelerate decarbonization and is aligned with Boxborough's sustainability and climate goals. Campagnelli's current proposal to provide only 10% EV-ready parking spaces falls well short of the 20% requirement under the Specialized Stretch Code. That's just one example of the challenges that are faced if we do not adhere to the Specialized Stretch Code requirements. And the proposed development should reflect the adopted sustainability policies and relevant planning documents of both the town and the Commonwealth. So that's sort of our key recommendation for the Planning Board to consider. We also think that a stronger commitment to green design and sustainability as part of the special permit, not deferred to site plan review, is not unreasonable to ask as part of that permitting process where the expectation is that something is going to come as a benefit to the town as part of that process and deliver meaningful community benefits, including climate leadership that are consistent with the sustainability goals of the town. We also would request a revised EV infrastructure plan to meet or exceed the 20% EV-ready requirement. I'm probably out of time for my two minutes, but those are my key things.
Thank you so much. That's very helpful. I appreciate it. Thanks for your comments. You can always come back if there's another person that comes in, so.
Sure.
Any other public comment at this time? Okay, hearing done. Catherine, one more whack or are you good? Is Catherine?
Sorry. I think I said the most important things that we wanted to get across. The only thing I would add is that we believe that by investing in the Specialized Stretch Code at this stage and planning for that investment, Campagnelli is going to benefit, right? Like, it's not, it's not like that isn't going to come back to the company as a return on that investment in the long run. And if we're talking about a 20- to 50-year horizon on these buildings, that is a very, there's very easy return on investment math that supports that investment doing that now.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your comments. Okay, any other public comment at this time? Okay, I am seeing none. Okay, so there were a number of comments and questions that were submitted by the board members. I think Cindy, Richard, and myself submitted documents. We received a letter that was responding specifically to my comments. But I'd like to kind of pick up the discussion where we left off during our last meeting and give board members an opportunity to ask questions, comments. And I'm hoping that we can live edit while we're moving through this to just kind of keep things moving forward. So Alec, I would like to ask you if you could pull up the document, the clean version, and we can just go through comments from the beginning as we need to.
When you refer to the clean version, I just want to make sure I'm using the right one. Which document should I pull up here?
I guess it's the one that the board members all commented on because we didn't combine the comments into one document. So we have basically three commented documents, I think, and we have one that was clean without any comments on it. And so I guess we kind of need to look at almost four of these things in tandem to kind of go through this process a little bit.
Yes, and my apologies, everybody. When we did attempt to do the document merge, for some reason, the third document threw everything askew and it made it an illegible document. So unfortunately, we do have, excuse me, the individualized drafts. I will also note Attorney Schneider earlier today did provide me with an updated draft of the decision that has not been shared with the board. It was only received earlier today. So if you would like, I can pull that up. It effectively just consolidates some of the discussion points and the modifications that Campagnelli has made based on the feedback that was previously provided. Or I can, of course, pull up the clean version that you referred to earlier. Ultimately, that's your decision, Madam Chairperson.
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm a little concerned about looking at a document that we haven't looked at yet this evening. So, but I see Johanna's hand up, so I'm going to ask her to maybe speak to that new version that we haven't looked at.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to, and for the record, Johanna Schneider counseled to Campagnelli. What I sent to Alec today was intended to just facilitate the editing. There are only two changes to that document. One is that in the draft that we had submitted to the board at the end of August, which is the one that all of the board members have physically commented into, the conditions were in bullet point format rather than numbered. So I went and I added numbers to facilitate this conversation. I thought it would be easier. Hey, can we talk about condition number two? The other change that was made was the board will recall that in advance of the October 6th meeting that we had with you, we had submitted a proposed revision to the commercial development period language, which we intended to have superseded what was in the August draft. So all I have done is copied and pasted what we submitted to the board in which the board has had the opportunity to look at the October 2nd revision to the commercial development period language. That's now in one document. Again, I thought it would be easier than jumping around to, you know, the two-pager that we submitted in October, which we intended to have supplant the earlier provision on that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, Johanna. I appreciate that.
And there are no other changes.
Okay, thank you. Chris, I'll give you a comment and then I'll ask the gentleman.
I was going to say, I think starting with that one makes sense, especially if the only real changes are making it easier to reference what we're talking about with numbering and that altered kind of timetable, which we had already discussed and was probably going to get put in anyway. And then, I'm not sure how we generally do these, but if it makes sense to start with that and then just kind of walk through page by page and then kind of compare the various proposed edits, is that?
That's what I suggested, yeah. And I'd be in agreement with you based on Ms. Schneider's, Attorney Schneider's explanation for that. So, but I would like to ask the other board members if they're comfortable proceeding with the document submitted that was just explained by Attorney Schneider.
Yeah, I'm good.
Good.
Cindy? Yeah, is it redlined or is it just revised and all looking like regular text?
It's fully Clean City.
I'm sorry?
It's fully clean. It has no redlining and it, again, just because it only has those two changes.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay, great. Alex got it ready to roll. Great, perfect. Thank you. Maybe when we get to the revision, we can just point it out for clarity. Okay, anybody have comments on this initial opener?
Rebecca, so I had a bunch of comments throughout the document, so I'm happy to restate those as we go through this. I think as we're going line by line, I guess anybody who's got a comment on the section probably should jump in. Is that what you're proposing?
I think that's the best way to approach this since we have multiple documents to go through if people are in agreement with that.
Yep, that sounds sensible.
Okay, well, I, I found right at the bottom of the title, first of all, I think there's a typo in amendment. But I guess that's sort of a question for the board, you know. I think the request is to amend the prior permit, but I wanted to ensure that the board was, this could also be treated, I think, as a new special permit. I haven't, I know Adam Costas here may be advised a little bit on this, but, you know, my hope is to incorporate all the prior conditions from the prior permit, but I don't know whether there's value in seeking this as a new permit or calling an amendment to the prior permit. So I don't know if anyone has any thoughts about that.
I'd defer to Adam maybe for that.
So, Madam Chair, through you, I don't have a particular preference and I don't think that there is necessarily legal significance to the manner in which the decision issues, whether it's referred to as an amendment to an earlier permit or the reissuance or new issuance of a permit. There's a practical question about whether you want to incorporate by reference, for example, conditions or mitigation requirements that might have been a part of an earlier permit or whether you wish to restate them so that you have within the four corners of a new document every right, every obligation of the board, the applicant, third parties within a new document. But either way, that doesn't necessarily dictate the terminology you use to refer to that document. I think we can all agree that the earlier permit has expired. So what you're really doing by amending it is you're sort of reviving that permit. But again, either way, it's an OSCD permit. So whether it's a new permit or a prior permit being amended, this is not a circumstance where there are some rights that attach in one circumstance but not in the other, where there's pre-existing non-conformities that need to have existed. We're not dealing with any of those things in this context. So I don't think it has really meaningful legal significance. It's up to you.
Okay, that's helpful because I wasn't sure if some things were no longer germane, you know, did it make sense? I think it sounds appropriate to just consider this an amendment, but I did want to raise that issue because some things from the prior permit are not relevant anymore. But if counsel is comfortable, I want to make sure that we do reference all prior conditions and I just want to make sure that we're not including prior conditions that no longer apply. So that was sort of the conundrum for me, but that's why we got brighter legal minds on this that can help us through that, I guess.
Rich, you got your hand up?
Yeah, my experience, not with OSCD special permits and amendments, but with amendments in general to longstanding contractual arrangements, is to go ahead with an amendment. I also think it, you know, while it's nice to have all the four corners in one document, I'm very much a proponent of basically saying all prior elements of the pre-existing decision or permit are in effect except as modified here. If there are things that are no longer relevant, they somewhat become somewhat OBE, self-deleting, or if we're that concerned about it, we can always go through them and specifically call out that they're no longer applicable. But I, you know, I think the essence of it is whatever was there before is okay and we want to bring a lot of that in. We just say it simply like that and then we amend from there. It's kind of how, that's the way I've seen this done many times. So, I mean, it's not a big deal, but it does make it a little easier and you risk, you reduce the risk of missing something or screwing something up in the process.
Thanks, Rich. Cindy, did you have more comment on that?
Yeah, I'm okay with proceeding as is.
All right. I had Chris.
Yeah, likewise, for the same reasons basically as Rich stated. It helps to refer to the previous things. So just in case something isn't explicitly called out, it's still, the intent is still clear. So I'm good with keeping it like this.
Okay.
All right. My next comment was on the third, sort of fourth bullet here. It said place approximately 94 acres into permanent open space restriction. I think based on Attorney Costas' comments last time, that's the correct language to use. We don't have to say open space and conservation restriction, but just going to ask that question again.
So through you, Madam Chair. So I think that that's correct. The language of the OSCD bylaw is that an open space restriction is required, that the area that is designated as open space has to be restricted as such. Now, whether the board wishes that that open space restriction be true conservation land or restricted by way of a conservation restriction, which is a bit different or can be a bit different than an open space restriction, I suppose that's something that can be discussed with the applicant. But the requirement of the bylaw is that the area be restricted as open space. And so this language is consistent with what the bylaw requires.
Great, thank you. And then I had a couple of minor comments on the first paragraph of the subject property I had added. It is located within the Office Park zoning district and I also included the aquifer protection. Sorry, that's second sentence there. It's located within the Office Park zoning district I had also added in the aquifer protection district. And then the next paragraph, you'll want to obviously update that for additional hearing dates. Sorry, you didn't have to retype it. It was already in there. As the second sentence already said, it's okay to within the office park. I just want to. Right there, yeah. And the next paragraph is just updated for additional hearing dates. And then I had comments on my version on modifying the listed exhibits, but you don't have to do that in real time. Alec, if you guys want to go back to those comments and adding the dates and all that of the exhibits.
What are you suggesting changes there, Cindy?
Yeah, I had a bunch, a bunch of specifics on all those exhibits.
Okay, written into your document.
It's redlined in the Cindy Markowitz, yeah, of the edit, the CJM edit version. So can I just trust that the planner staff will add those?
Yes.
Any new exhibits? And I think we've gotten some new exhibits also since then.
Yes, I will note your Dropbox has a complete itemized list of exhibits. Thank you, Ian, for putting that together. And yes, board members, you can submit if you want to modify the way we list these. This is an administrative component. Please do let me know if you would like, whether it's date, sequential, something else changed in the way we list your exhibits. That's standard forming content that we can modify to your liking.
Right, and I gave you some edits, so I won't go through those. Keep going. Okay, under the second paragraph under background, so the OSCD special permit granted dimensional parking relief. My question was which, which decision? I don't know if both of them went, granted the 3.3 spaces, but I just wanted to be specific there.
It was 01-01.
Okay, thank you. Again, I had a minor amount of text. I got to look at this and look at Chris at the same time here. Paragraph beginning in 2022. Second sentence, in 2023. Let's make sure you're caught up with me.
Wouldn't it be easier?
Yeah, right there. Yeah, it should be the zoning board of appeals approve a special permit.
Alec was to put your document up alongside rather than?
Yeah, I've got comments along the way too. I think we.
All three of us do. I think it gets a little complicated because there's three, there's actually four documents we're reviewing right now.
I found that same change, that it was his only board of appeals. That was one of my comments. So we had a double hit.
Right, and I, the number of the permit was 22, sorry, 2023-01 if you want to put that parenthetically.
So I guess, Mark, to your point, I'm sorry to sort of cut in here, Rebecca. I guess, is, that is, I guess I understood that's what we were doing, right? As we go through this, if any of us have comments in any section, that's where we raise it. We're kind of doing a page flip.
Yeah, I think so. I don't know how to more clearly do it with all the documents, honestly. So I'm hoping that people are scrolling through the documents that were in the packet while we're going through this. I've got mine pulled up, which is, sounds like yours and Cindy seems to have hers, so.
I am, but I'm thinking for Alec's sake to have.
Some sanity.
Cut in case, so he knows where Cindy's pointing, basically, because she can't point.
Do you have multiple screens, Alec, where you can have hers open on?
I do. I have all three of the other decisions to my left-hand side. So for me personally, this structure is the most, is the most effective. And if I need to pull from another document, that's easy to do.
Okay, great. So it's available so you can copy paste if there's like a long sentence or something.
At the end of that sentence, I wanted to add the context of what's already been built. So my, the sentence I would add after building 500 period would be, in total, 491,000 square feet of new building has occurred at the park at Beaverbrook. Or to date, maybe.
Is that, oh, in aggregate.
To date, right?
Well, new, you say new building. New is relative, right? Most of it was in 2000, right? It, yeah.
So Cindy, I've imported, I've imported that sentence and the following new paragraph directly into this decision. So the board can see both in total, all the way down to private wells in the next paragraph.
Yeah, I mean, you guys can tweak it. If it's not new building, what do you want to call it?
Well, in total, 491,000 square feet of building space exists as of today or?
Yeah, I think as of today is important to put in some place.
Maybe it's the beginning. As of today, 491,000 square feet have been, has been built.
I wouldn't use the word today in a formal decision.
As of this date of?
As of the date of this decision, yeah.
Yeah, the date of this decision.
Strike in total, right?
Yeah. A total of?
491,000 square feet of, I would get rid of new.
Is that related to building that square footage? Is that building specific to building construction though? Or is it construction? Because construction could be.
Yeah, parking lots and stuff.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Square feet of, has been developed. It's buildings, right? Is that what you're saying, Cindy? It's building space, 491,000 of the?
Yeah, we might want Campagnelli just to vet that number. Yeah, we might want Campagnelli just to vet that number, I think that might be a total that I calculated.
Through the chair, this is Russell, that number is correct, it's technically about two hundred and fifty four squeet feet less, but it's okay, it's probably better that you listed it four nine one zero zero zero. My suggestion would be to call it existing building square footage.
Yeah. As of the day of this decision, there is, there are four hundred ninety one thousand square feet of existing building square footage. In at the park. Existing building square footage at the park.
The existing part is throwing me off. We're talking about them being constructed, right, but they're, yeah, like the building has been constructed, that squeet of, yeah, that reads better to me.
Okay, and then this next paragraph, I think is really self explanatory, I wanted to identify that since the original permits, um, there's been at least one new development. Um, and it just describes describes that development.
I'd like that addition.
Do we know, are those all, are those all factually correct, like two thousand eight, fifty two units, closest unit forty feet, is that all?
Um, I vetted it, but certainly someone else can vet it.
Well, do where did we get the information, was it in the application?
Uh, it's a good question, um. I may have done a little bit of research on my own, I I can't recall if I went to Harvard GIS.
Johanna.
Like the closest.
It was not in the application.
Thank you.
Like the closest unit is forty feet, is that, was that an approval? In the permit, is that, is that an actual as built, is that a foundation, is it a deck? I don't object to to having it, I just like a, where did the facts come from?
Um, I would have to go back and find it, but I either went to Harvard's um web GIS or, um. I know we got a couple of letters from from the applicants and uh like I said, they're they're facts, I just can't recall what what the source is at this moment.
Does Bob have anything to add there?
Through the chair, I might be able to help.
Russ, I'll recognize you with your hand up, thank you, um, go ahead.
Um. I don't have the document in front of me, I do have the permitting documents for that development in my office. Um, the zoning in that area at time of the comp permit is forty five foot setback. They were granted relief to thirty foot setback. And most of the buildings lie between thirty seven and forty one feet. But there are a few corners that encroach as close as thirty three feet. So that's the uh that, I I don't believe it should all be written in this permit, but I'm just correcting as as Rich said, what are the real facts, those are the facts.
Thank you, Russ.
I I mean, I maybe you, if the closest unit is not forty feet, like and if it's just a corner, maybe we delete that sentence. Um, or we put state what the permit said, um.
Um, I will try and find where I got that data from.
Maybe highlight it until you confirm that.
Yep.
Well, I think I think uh the applicant has stated that it's not that, that it's there's a range. There was a a permit that approved forty five feet, then there were a it was a variance to thirty five, and then there's, you know, like I I think we heard, like, I don't know, I just, are we trying to get to a number, or?
Well, I'll take the, I mean, happy to have the applicant provide those documents so we can get this language correct.
I- is this language necessary?
I think it's relevant, it's it's close to the property line, and I think that's what this is trying to say.
To what end?
Again, yeah, to to what angle is what.
What end?
Statement of of the facts here.
Because when we're talking about setbacks, and we will be talking about setbacks, I think this is an important fact, so I would like to have the the uh building distances from the property line accurate.
They're on a draw, aren't, isn't there an act, I mean, do we have a draw, well, all right.
The applicant provided a drawing, so go ahead.
I was going to suggest simply, we had a hand in drafting this background language, and the purpose of this section was really just to give the permit history. Um, so my suggestion would in fact be to take this language and put it somewhere else in this document rather than in the what is really just a recitation of the evolution of the park, perhaps this is language that is more appropriately. You know, I don't even know if it's, you know, maybe when we're on the very first page discussing the subject property, where it is located, you know, I've seen in many permit decisions, um, you know, a discussion of what abutting properties are, or what the site is bounded by. And maybe it's more appropriate to have it there rather than a discussion, in the discussion of the background history of the permit that's being amended.
However, this is a major change that has taken place since this permit was issued, so I feel like it is pretty relevant here, um. Because it's it's really created a completely new site out there for us, it's it's a very different situation than it was twenty years ago.
And Madam Chair, I'm not disputing that it belongs in here, I'm just saying that for someone who, for example, would diligence this site, you know, and review the permit history, having that in the middle of the discussion of how you got from point A to point B to this current amendment, it may not fit in in this location.
Thank you, Johanna. Thoughts on that Cindy, you're the original author of that, um.
Yeah, I mean, this is background, um, so it's what the subject header is on, I think this is the appropriate place. Um, if we created separate section describing the site and surrounding abutters, you know, that will be adding another section about how many abutters are in the the radius of the site, um, I always liked more facts, but I wasn't looking to do that, but um, so I I think it was okay in this section for now.
I I would tend to agree, I feel like this is a different situation than it was twenty years ago, um.
Is it a finding of fact then, is it a finding of fact, or?
Madam Chairperson?
I'm sorry, go ahead Alec.
If it pleases the board, I've I've since updated the language to to read the closest unit is within thirty five feet of the property line of the park at Beaver Brook. Um, if this is sufficient, regardless of where we choose to place this here or elsewhere, um, perhaps we should continue down the decision, and if we find another logical point, we can always bring this over.
Okay, thank you, um, so we're highlighting a note about that Alec, so that we can return to it. Thank you.
And I and I think what I heard is, I'm sorry Alec, I know you want to move on. What I heard is there are corners, like it may not be the unit itself, it may, it may be a corner of it, but we can come back to it.
Okay, who's got the next comment?
Um, I had tweaked this language, I'm just rereading it to see if it's uh important, um. So, so one of the questions that I generally have and why I was asking about whether this should be a new permit versus an amendment is that the way some of this background material is, it speaks to what the applicant is proposing to do in relation to the an earlier proposal, um, what I was trying to do is put it more in the context of what are we seeing today? So I had revised the language to identify that the the proposal includes four hundred and forty six thousand square feet of new building footprint with the potential of an additional two hundred and twenty one thousand five hundred square feet of mezzanine space for a total potential of six hundred and sixty seven thousand five hundred square feet with associated parking. Um, as opposed to reducing the total build out from one point four to one point one five. Because again, I'm trying to read this as, if I were looking at this for the first time, I wouldn't know, you know, really what that what that meant, so it's trying to be more clear.
Johanna.
I would just comment that the full description along the lines of what Cindy has described actually appears at the, I think the way this is formatted, the next page under a section that Cindy wanted to call applicant's proposal, which goes into substantial detail about what is being proposed um by the applicant. And again, you know, the reason that the paragraph, you know, reads as it was originally drafted was because this is an amendment. And I think drawing the comparison to what was previously permitted to what is being changed fits well within the background. And it's certainly not to the exclusion of of the wholesome, you know, fulsome description of what is actually being proposed, you know, two paragraphs later.
Yeah, I mean, again, I I the way I read these applications, I like to see what's being proposed, not what what not what's not being proposed. But I I can move on and uh as long as the description of the proposal is adequately described later.
And then the first and the first five bullets of the decision on page one also has a summary of the proposal, including the square footage and the parking ratio and the open space restriction.
What if we, so like if we're gonna add this, which I understand, right, we're trying to describe what this does, you can still leave the the sentence in, the proposed master plan reduces total build out from the previously permitted one point five minute, why why wouldn't we say that? That's a, that's a, that's a matter of fact.
Yep, it it could stay. Like I said, it's a.
Yeah, it it's essentially stating the same thing from both different directions, so.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Yeah, you can, you can, um, um, if you're gonna add my my insert and unstrike the uh the reduction piece, you can keep that in there.
Yeah, more than what is current, more than the empty field that's currently there, but less than the original plan could have been.
Now, comfortable with that?
Yeah, and then just insert right where your cursor is there, maybe a new sentence, the proposed master plan.
And maybe it's a million square feet approximately, and reconfigures?
Yeah, and.
And, okay.
I don't know if you need a comma there, uh, um.
No, no comma.
Are we moving on?
Yep.
Yeah, the next thing I write, Alec just clapped it in there, um, again, I I liked it, create a baseline of uh what the development actually means, um, so I pulled this from the uh primarily from the uh supplemental EIR. Um, so, uh, I might have tweaked things a little bit just to consolidate, but these were the the things that I thought were most germane about the proposed development.
Yeah, I I don't think it belongs in the background, um, if we're gonna do impacts, that should be somewhere in this, but probably not in the background. Um, and I'll ask.
Findings of fact.
Yeah, it could be moved to the findings of fact.
And and I guess, so Cindy, you got this from the where, from the MIPA filing or from the application?
Um, well, it's a combination, probably the MIPA filing, the application, um. Again, I tried to pull the um numerical data from either Campagnelli's filing or or subsequent fi- um supplemental materials or the MIPA application.
Yeah, and I don't, I guess I I'll go to the same, like, is this still true, like, right, so the MIPA filing was two years ago. We now have an application, like, is this all still, we just need to make sure that whatever we're saying here is true.
Yeah, I mean, happy for the applicant to weigh in on on each of these, but, um, if.
Was this copied verbatim Cindy?
Uh, I I not verbatim, I did some math, I think, um, for instance, when they averaged the number, I took a high and a low, like on the parking spaces. Um, so it's not verbatim.
Russ, do you have a comment?
Sure, um, thank you. On bullet point number one, I think the wording there is is correct, but the detail is missing. So we went through um at least three discussions with Mr. Rockwood about this, and I'll try to keep it super brief, um. Alteration of twenty eight acres of land mapped as priority habitat is correct. So I'm not gonna say it's incorrect, however, we have a conservation management permit issued from natural heritage, which allows us to alter this twenty eight acres because we preserved seventy eight, seventy six other acres in the mitigation for the turtles was put in place. Without that mitigation and preservation of nesting areas, this alteration would not be allowed to take place. Um, this is located on Mass Mapper, which does not recognize conservation management permits, and it also does not recognize that it's land that is the developable until a building is placed there, and John explained that. Um, so I just, this one here is is correct, but somebody not on this call would misunderstand the the facts. Because there is a permit to develop that land.
I I guess, um, so I'm not disputing having an impact here Cindy. I guess what might be helpful, right, so like we could tweak every one of these. And, you know, if that's what we're gonna do, that's what we're gonna do, and fine, but another way to approach it might be to get, you know, uh, Russell had sort of commented on that one, I don't, it might be good to get sort of overall input on the whole list, and then we could kind of work it, workshop it, but like, and then we can kind of move to the next thing, right, I don't, I don't, I mean, it's a list of impacts, I get it, right, somewhere that we're gonna put a list of impacts, let's fact check them. I guess is my thought.
And Chris?
Yeah, I guess, uh, similar to the 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 square footage of treating it from both angles, um. So a- a- as we just mentioned, you know, this many acres, you know, will be altered, uh, but X, you know, seventy something acres will will be preserved. I guess just for clarity, if we're gonna spell that out, I I feel like it's it's fair to spell, spell it out for both directions.
Chris.
If I may help the board through the chair, please.
Go ahead, Russ.
Um, I think the remaining bullet points of, and I can check it when I'm in the office, but I believe the remaining bullet points are roughly correct, I mean, numerically, I can't fact check it as Rich said, but I do believe the remainder of this is correct, there is um creation of impervious surfaces, there are trips. Um, you know, we're not gonna sit here and compare it back to the Cisco project, and I'm not requesting we do that. Um, these are maximum development statistics, which were submitted to this board and also to the Mass MIPA office. So I do believe, rough and tough, that this is all correct, but I'd like to skip to the bottom bullet point, um. And this goes to the sustainability comment at the beginning of the meeting. The town adopted the um a stretch code in two thousand and twenty three, so the stretch code, I'm not trying to change subjects, was enforced on the T U V project. It also is enforced through the MIPA office, and we have participated in the stretch code in this park already, and we are committed to all of the best practices for sustainability, and I could read the nineteen things that we did at T U V, but I'm not quite sure the board would want me to do that. Um, so through the greenhouse gas study and through building technology and in electric heat pumps and a variety of other things, there was an offset of the greenhouse gas to, and I I can't provide any language that Alec should put into this document, but there is an offset to. put into this document, but there is an offset to building insulation, uh, CO2 emissions based out of the building technologies that are required per the stretch code that offset the tons of, um, emissions per year. So, so that gets you through most of the bullet points, and that's my commentary on the final piece.
Yeah, I, I guess, and I'll go to Chris's comment, like, I feel like this is the list of the horribles, right? Which I get it, there's an impact to any development. But the whole point of this extension is there are mitigations, there are responses to, to these items. And I feel like if we just put these items out here without having the, like, so, like, this board's going to address what the impact is, that's what our job is, but like, this language isn't showing that, right?
Cindy?
Yeah, so, you know, again, um, how we phrase this, you know, this is pretty directly from the media S C I R. I think, you know, when you talk about impact mitigation, it's important to say, what are you, what are you mitigating from? We can certainly tweak this language, maybe, I don't want to say soften it, but, you know, put it in a little bit of context. But, um, you know, when you're proposing mitigation, you know, there's really no mention of what you're mitigating. I agree with Russ that yes, there is proposed mitigation to reduce three hundred some odd tons out of this thirteen hundred ninety-two, but that's why you're doing the mitigation. And you've, you know, the commitments that were made through the MIPA process is that you're going to do this by, um, reduction on stationary and mobile sources. So it's, it's okay, you know, it's great to provide the mitigation, but you need some context, what are you mitigating from? And I think without this context, you know, um, a, and again, the same thing with the donation of, of land and the preservation of, of land for conservation, which is wonderful mitigation, but you're mitigating impacts associated with the development. And I don't think the way the original, um, draft, uh, was crafted did it in such a way to identify what are you mitigating from. So, you know, we can work this language a little bit better, perhaps a little more smoothly, but, um, I think it's important to identify why you're proposing mitigation. And, uh, that's, you know, this, these were direct, almost direct bullet points out of the S C I R. So, you know, I think the facts are, are correct, but happy to, uh, to work on the language.
I definitely would like to just get them double checked and, um, Campanelli, uh, team, you should feel free to review them and just make sure you're comfortable with the calculations as they're shown to. Um, Johanna?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Um, I want to pick up on a comment that Cindy made about, you know, needing, about us all sharing the goal of having this be contextual. And I'm a little bit concerned that when we start talking about using MIPA numbers, which, you know, the board is aware, the MIPA process requires us to study and proper mitigation for a maximum build out. Um, and as we've said to this board many times, in this master plan exercise, we are looking for permission to build up to a certain number. I'm a little bit uncomfortable when we're saying impacts as a result of the project include the following, because this is based on a maximum build out. And as we've said to the board many times, yes, it's a maximum build out, but it is not clear at all because we have not identified end users, we don't have specific buildings proposed, we don't have specific site plans, all of which will be coming back to this board in due time, um, to be tagging the project with specified impacts based on an up to number when it's not clear that these, that the maximum build is going to occur and that the numbers that we were required to submit to MIPA because of the way their process works, you know, should be assumed to be coming to fruition here.
Thank you. Uh, maybe we can identify that this is considering a maximum build out for this.
I, I think I would be much more comfortable with an approach like that because right now starkly saying impacts as a result of the following include the, you know, impacts as a result of the project include the following, I think it's by no means certain that these will actually be the impacts of this project.
So perhaps impacts as the result of a maximum build out for this project?
I mean, I, I, I think we could say something like that, or we can even reference the MIPA documents, but I think that we're doing a little bit of cross pollination here that's not necessarily appropriate in, in a local special permit decision.
Okay. I think that does a better job of calling out, this is the, this is the potential top end.
Well, we've got something funny happening, impacts as a result of the results of a maximum, doubling up there. And one more of, yeah, thank you.
And if you want to reference, um, the, the supplemental E I R, um, feel free. It is a document that I think we include, we include as an exhibit, or at least the, yeah, the certificate. I assume we referenced the, uh, the S C I R as well. You want to spell out the S C I R if that's your first reference, or maybe you've referenced it already at the top?
I, um, have highlighted that one, I'll come back and, uh, spell that one out afterwards.
Great, thank you. So the next section that was labeled finding a fact, um, as Johanna, as Johanna noted, I really saw this more as the applicant's proposal. You know, we can quibble over the, the headings, but this felt to me that, um, you know, it's what's being proposed. And then the facts, I think, to, in my mind, should really, um, go to, either, you know, well, I'll, I'll leave that for now, but I, I, I saw this more as a, an applicant's proposal as opposed to finding a fact.
I, um, had a comment here, well, my, my, I'm sorry, Cindy, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was going to jump on the first bullet, but if you, uh, if you have something, you can go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I, and this mostly, I think, is something to be addressed later. Um, but, you know, the list of, you know, this is what the applicant proposes, ninety-four acres, permanently take open space, which will get us to two hundred forty-eight acres specifically, and it's all these, the lot one hundred. This is going to the town, forty-six to Harvard, perpetual deed, uh, open space restriction will be recorded. To me, it's, we, we need to discuss the timing of these events. And I, I realize this is probably not the place, particularly if we call this applicant's proposal. There's a later section where we probably want to tackle that, which is in the, I think it begins on page, well, I don't know, I have a markup. So it's eleven or fourteen on my page, but it's in the, it's in the additional findings section. But I just want to make the point that we need, in my opinion, we need to address the, the dates when these things happen. And I think there's some work we have to do to square that away.
I think that's a good point, too, um, as well. Uh, Johanna?
I would suggest only that the timing discussion, um, and we are very happy to discuss timing, you know, to the extent that we've not addressed it in proposed conditions already, but the specific timing for delivery of these things feels appropriately handled in the conditions. And so, you know, perhaps when we get to that section of the draft decision, we can talk about timing there.
Yeah.
Do you want to, um, highlight, um, your question here, Rich? And then move through the other ones and see if you feel like things have been met?
Yeah, yeah, we can highlight it, capture the timing in the, in the, um, conditions. I, I see there's, uh, it looks like there's a section, other findings, but maybe that is a conditions, I don't know.
Um, on the second bullet, if we're ready to move on, the one that starts with the plan includes five new buildings, um, I just inserted the aggregate, um, at the top there, so people didn't have to do the math. So it says, the plan includes five new buildings, insert for a total maximum building footprint of four hundred and forty-six thousand square feet, and optional mezzanine space up to two hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred square feet, broken down as follows. And then, yeah, okay, so you see that.
Yeah, at the, at the bottom, uh, go down below the buildings, Alec. The, uh, these buildings are anticipated to be used for R and D, clean tech, uh, hot and light manufacturing, optional mezzanine space is a conservative estimate of potential maximum build out. I, that was confusing to me, conservative meaning it's a safe number, meaning it, it's like a big number or conservative meaning like it's a small number and it could be bigger, like I just, is it a max number? Like, I think we just, the word conservative was confusing. Is that, I guess the question then would be, is that mezzanine space optional? Is it the hot, that's as high, as large as it would be? Is that what we mean, conservative? Okay, so maybe just say optional mezzanine space, uh, is, you know, identified as a maximum, you know, potential. And I see Russell has his hand up, so I'm not trying to put words in what the application is, it just, conservative was confusing to me.
Yeah, I agree. I just, so I want to just make sure we're working through the board's comments before we're getting input from others. So Russ, thank you for being patient. Uh, what did you want to add here?
Oh, no problem, Chair. Um, in the first sentence, I'd like to revise, these buildings are anticipated to be used for R and D. I'd like to strike clean tech. That is not a term used in your bylaw, and I'd like to replace it with office. Because what we are doing here is we are, um, allowing for the same uses that the bylaw allows today, which is office, R and D, and light manufacturing.
Thank you, good catch. Okay, what's up next?
Got a comment on the bullet that says the proposed reduction to two spaces, excuse me. Let's see.
Where is that one?
Sorry, the proposed reduction, yeah, okay. Are you just going to insert it out? Can I get a reread it so I know what I was trying to say? Yeah, so I, I felt it was important to call out, even though, you know, we appreciate that, that this, the reduction in spaces, you know, it's, which is a great movement towards less pervious, less impervious. I did want to just somewhere identify the number of new parking spaces, because I do think that's a, something that wasn't inherently obvious. So, um, there might have been an average provided by the applicant, but I think I used the, uh, the four hundred and forty-six thousand as the minimum square footage and the six hundred thousand as the maximum and multiplied that by two, and that's where I got the eight hundred ninety-two to thirteen hundred and thirty-four new parking spaces. Um, but I, I thought that was important to identify how many parking spaces we were talking about adding.
Well, and I guess what I was thinking is the proposed reduction to two spaces per thousand square feet. Now, to me, and, you know, Campanelli's a developer of these types of uses and came in with this recommendation, which probably aligns to data it has. But to me, like, a large automated facility, like, is square footage really the right, base measurement to use? Like, the right, is it, you know, you have a large automated facility? It might be more like, well, how many employees are expected to be there and how many visitors? So, and I don't want to micro, um, assess this right now, but I guess my thought was it could be, could it be less than two spaces? And maybe this isn't the place to mention it, is two spaces a maximum? I know that's what they're asking for, but it would be, is it up to a maximum of two spaces per thousand?
I think this verbiage comes out of our bylaw, doesn't it? Alec, I don't know if you can speak to that, but.
Well, we do have parking ratios based on the type of use.
And it is per, it is by use and per the size of the building, which I think is maybe outdated.
I definitely would agree with that statement, Rich. It's been driving me nuts for a long time.
It's, it's outdated, and I think it's a specific requirement. Given on, at the time it was written, what the average, you know, if it is an office building, that's a cube farm, how many spaces per square foot are you likely going to need? That's probably where the math came from. That's not what currently happens. So.
Russ, you have a comment?
Oh, sure, thank you. I'm not sure this is necessary, something for the permit, but just to help Rich's thinking. In spirit, um, if we did have a facility, and we do have a couple of data centering clouds and other properties that we own, which have very little parking, um, we deal with the reduction in parking during that site plan approval process. And if we had a user that wouldn't require the two spaces per thousand, I have a good feeling that this board would work with us to deliver the proper spaces, because nobody wants to pave over, um, pervious surfaces, um, if they don't have to. So I think we would just deal with the reduction of parking on a case by case basis, if a user is, is extremely lower than the two spaces per thousand.
That, that, that works for me. That's, that was my point, is I think that it's, this may be antiquated and it might go less. So I'm open to a reduction at a site plan for sure.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, Alec, go ahead.
Um, as the board was discussing, I did pull up your zoning bylaw. Your current zoning bylaw requires one space per two hundred fifty feet of gross floor area or a ratio of four spaces per one thousand.
Okay. So this is pulled out of that, then, it sounds like, okay, great.
Where, Alec, can you just provide the reference? I don't see the one for four thousand, I see the one for two fifty, but.
Uh, one for two fifty, or that would be a rate of four per thousand. So just the math of multiplying that by, um, four.
Oh, that's under the, sorry, under which, which use were you referencing?
Under, so it's page thirty-nine of the bylaw of the off-street parking requirements. You'll see business, professional offices, office governmental, philanthropic shops, R and D, manufacturing, wholesale. They're all under one umbrella, starts with business.
Yeah, so I see it now. So is the proposal to say allow for a maximum, but, um, further reduction to be determined upon site plan, review for each application?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, that looks good, too.
Yeah, and I'll note manufacturing is one space per employee, plus one space for each vehicle used in operation.
Hold on, you didn't, um, reference that this number could be reduced?
Uh, the proposed, the proposed reduction to no more than two point zero spaces.
Do we want to memorialize that further? The planning board has discretion to further reduce upon site plan review or something?
We always do, don't we?
Madam Chairperson?
Yeah, go ahead, Alec.
I, at this point, I would like to tag in Attorney Costa. So, um, this is a nuance of your special permit type. Your special permit type allows you to modify the zoning bylaw. Where I get a little bit shaky and where I'd like Adam's input is, uh, how the board could word something and where it should word something to give the board greater flexibility at a later date through a different permit type. Adam, is something like that feasible and, and would it be included here or, or somewhere else in the decision?
Um, so, so ask your question again, would the board have the ability to do what?
So the board has discussed through here that the applicant is asking for a maximum of two spaces per one thousand square feet. However, the applicant also theorizes that it could be even less than two spaces per thousand square feet needed. The board would like to give itself the flexibility during site plan approval to further reduce the parking requirements in the zoning bylaw. And the question is. And the question is whether that needs to be stated here, elsewhere in the decision, or if it's outright an ability of the board at the time of site plan review.
Not sure it is. I'm looking through the provisions of the OSCD bylaw now. It certainly is something that, that the board has the authority to do, to, to grant relief through the special permit process. Uh, generally speaking, separate and apart from the OSCD bylaw, a special permit granting authority wouldn't have the ability through the special permit process to defer a substantive decision that it is obligated to make as part of that process to some other distinct process. If there were further special permits required or further amendments, maybe. I suspect that what the applicant would need to do is if in the future, in connection with making application for site plan approval for a building or a phase of the future development, it's determined that the parking reduction would drop below, let's say, the two spaces per thousand square feet that the board has granted if this permit issues that we're looking at now. The, the applicant would need to make a sort of concurrent application to amend the special permit, which I realize is an inconvenience. Um, it's another application, it's another fee, it's a, an opening of a, of a public hearing, which could, could be conducted again simultaneously with the, the site plan review, but, but I, I'm happy to look through. I, I don't want to answer with certainty on the spot, but I'm, I'm looking through the bylaw now and see if there's any way that I can find some sorts of authority to do that, but it, it does give me, it, it does make me uncomfortable.
And I had the same, I, I was coming to the same conclusion. I was struggling with any language that would give them that ability.
So site plan rules and regs allow us to reduce the number of parking spaces, but from what number? From the bylaw or from the special permit?
So that's a, that's a fair point, Cindy, that I, I wonder if maybe there's a different source of authority. So the, the modification provisions of the OSCD bylaw, and I'm sorry, it looks like I had my video off here. Didn't mean to do that. Um, so the, the, the provisions of seven point five point four that deal with modification of bylaw requirements, including dimensions and parking, um, don't actually say that it occurs during the special permit process, but I think it's implied because the preceding sections talk about the special permit process of, of being the applicable process for obtaining an OSCD, um, approval. Um, but maybe if there's separate and distinct authority under the site plan provisions of the bylaw and your site plan rules and regulations, then maybe you could seize upon that authority to separately reduce the requirements without the need to amend the special permit. So that might be a way around it. I'll look at those now.
Okay, the reference I, in the rules and regs is under four point one point two. Site plan rules and regs.
Okay, four point one point two.
Do we want to continue and come back to this while we allow Adam to, um, look into this a little bit?
I, I think that that makes some sense, Madam Chair. So I, I found the provision that, uh, that Cindy's referencing, but I've got to tie it back into the bylaw. It's not enough to have authority created in a regulation. So let me see what I can find and I can respond, uh, in a few minutes.
Yeah, the provision right before that four point one references the parking shall be determined by the bylaw. So that's the, yeah, okay. All right, we can move on.
Uh, do you want to flag that, um, Alex, so we find it easily enough? Thank you. Okay, what's the next comment?
Okay, this was more a question that I had about, um, section sixty-one findings, the next bullet about traffic studies. So there were two sets of section sixty-one findings, one that were issued in May and one that were issued in September of twenty twenty-four. I, I want, I guess I'm, it's a question for the applicant. I assume you want all the, um, section sixty-one findings that were issued by DOT. So I think that's what this is listing. So I'd like confirmation.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we really only want the September twenty-four. So Cindy, um, just to address one of your questions, why were there two issued? The first one, there was a typo in that. The Mass DOT wrote in the, uh, section sixty-one that the signal at Swanson Road and Route one eleven in Codman was unsignalized. Even though in the very next sentence, they talked about the level of service at that interchange. So the word unsignalized was changed to signalized. So the September, um, letter supersedes the previous one. Um, so that, that, I believe addresses the question that we shouldn't include both.
Oh, okay. I, I, I wasn't sure if the second letter was supposed to supersede the first, but what you're saying is it was just a typo correction. I didn't pick that up. So all of these bullet items are, are the ones that were issued in the section sixty-one findings and.
Yeah, there was no, there was no change to the bulleted items that you have, that are in the permit below. That's correct.
Okay, and then I had a question about the, um, sorry, I'm just, I shrunk this down so I could see both screens and I can't see it. Um. Uh, let's see. Yeah, so the section sixty-one findings required, were required at the time of, after the building six hundred was complete. And I think we had a similar finding from our traffic consultant that, um, that signalization needed to be done. And so my question to the applicant, is this something that could be done sooner than the construction of building six hundred, since it was recommended by our traffic consultant to also do it?
Well, um, I really don't have an incentive to ask Mass DOT to change this section sixty-one, and let me explain the reason why. Um, the traffic studies that were conducted by, um, MDM Transportation at that signalized interchange at Swanson Road and Route one eleven, depending on whether you're southbound, eastbound or westbound, there's different levels of service, A, B, C, D, E, and F. Um, F is the only one considered by Mass DOT as something that should be adjusted. Um, at different points of day, during, uh, peak hour, it operates at levels B and C, which is an average delay of thirteen to twenty-three seconds. During non-peak hours, it, it teeter totters between A B and B C with an average delay of anywhere from thirteen to thirty seconds. Um, so essentially, the signal operates as it's intended today. And what's being asked is when more traffic is being put into the park with additional development. And this was a traffic study done post-T U V occupancy. Um, so this traffic study takes into consideration all of Swanson Road, the other commercial development, as well as the residential properties. Um, so mass, our permit, our section sixty-one finding indicates that there's no reason to change the signal and there's a check, there's a reason to check the signal after the next occupancy. Which I would prefer to just stay with the Mass DOT.
Okay, um. Yeah, I guess, uh, like I said, it was on a list of recommendations from a traffic consultant. Um, it may have been under the build as opposed to the no, to the, uh, no build scenario, but, um, I guess, um, Alec, could you just put a pin in that? I just want to verify that the recommendation from Green International was, uh, was under the build scenario and not the, uh, not the no build. Um, and then my only other comment here was I think, um, the full, um, you mentioned all the transportation management requirements and you might have mentioned this in your, uh, sorry, I gotta enlarge this again. Um, I think there was also a request for, uh, was it TMA membership? Um, I'm not even sure what, Transportation Management Association membership? Is that included as part of your, um, plan for, you know, for your, your overall traffic management plan by building, by tenant?
Yeah, I have no problem doing that, I, I believe, although, don't quote me on this. That's part of what our property management group does and administers. And this came up in a previous hearing. And I did go back to our property manager and talking with the tenants of the park. Um, a couple of tenants several years ago were a member of this organization. I think it's somewhat is, is disbanded for the moment. Um, but certainly if there's an organization that reorganize it, we have every intent to be part of it.
Can we add that as a, a bullet item here? Um, I think it's Transportation Management, uh, Association Membership. Or something to that effect, if, if, uh, uh, what if in existence at the time or something to that effect?
And what, what will that, what does that do? Is that, is that like? I don't know what it is. I don't know what it does.
It's allows the tenants to sort of coordinate. Well, Russ can explain it better, but there's a.
I think Cindy was going in the proper direction. It's, it's really a network in between, um, various businesses that are located within the region, which could go into Littleton and even parts of West Acton and Harvard, to allow a, a free communication to sharing carpooling or, or any other types of transportation, uh, carpooling measures, um, that sort of thing. So it, it's a networking opportunity.
Okay.
Um, all right, next bullet, um. So ahead of the, um, the sentence that's there, I, I was trying to, uh, identify how much increase in wastewater. So I added a sentence that said the park anticipates an increase of wastewater. Maybe you want to say of up to forty-two thousand oh, four, four gallons per day as a result of the project. Um, and then I wanted to identify, um, right after capacity. Uh, and a groundwater discharge permit has been received from Mass DEP and then I had the permit number and the date of issuance.
Adam, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. So before we move on, uh, too far from this page and the parking requirement up above, I, I found the relevant provision and it took me a little while because of the title. It's actually called Reduction of Paving Requirements. And it's not in the site plan, uh, approval section of your bylaw. It's in the parking section and the title would lead you to believe it isn't really addressing number of parking spaces, but it does. And what it says is that the number of parking spaces required, as well as the amount of, uh, off-street loading space that is required to be paved, can be reduced by the planning board as part of the site plan approval process if it is sufficiently demonstrated that a lower, lower number of spaces or a lesser amount of loading space will adequately serve the, the needs of the development. So it's effectively a separate source of authority through the site plan approval process as opposed to through the special permit process for an OSCD for the planning board to grant relief from parking. So I think that what you could do in this first highlighted bullet, bullet at the top here, where it refers to the proposed reduction to no more than two spaces, you could say something at the end, and I can work with Alec to structure the language if it's what the board wants to do, that says something like, further reductions, uh, may be achieved by, or may be requested by application to amend this decision or through the site plan approval process pursuant to section, it's section six point one point nine. Right? Six, six point one point nine. So I think that that then gives the applicant the opportunity to do either of the things that the bylaw permits it to do. Seek a amendment of the special permit or probably more easily in connection with a, a, a site plan review application for a phase within the development, ask for the board to utilize this section six point one point nine to reduce the, the requirement.
Makes sense.
Sure.
You might just want to say six and one, six point one point nine paving requirements of the zoning bylaw or something. In case the, you know, numbers change.
That's a good point.
A reduction of paving requirements is what it's called.
Do you want to highlight that? Because we don't need to go back to it now, right?
Well, yeah, we can unhighlight it, but what, what is this sentence? This would result in the addition of between eight hundred ninety-two and one thousand three and thirty-four new parking spaces. We're actually getting a reduction in parking spaces. What, what am I missing? I mean, I, yeah, there's going to be new parking spaces with new buildings, but it's less than, it's less than what's, what would be allowed under the current bylaw or under the old special permit.
So again, this was doing the math of how many, at two spaces per thousand, um, you would get eight hundred ninety-two to thirteen hundred thirty-four new parking spaces. However, it's reducing from the old number by, if you were to have three point three per thousand, then you're getting a reduction, I guess, of nine hundred and forty-two. So it's just a math exercise. I was just trying to identify how many new parking spaces would be.
Yeah, we, we could say, which is eight hundred ninety-two to thirteen hundred thirty-four less than what's allowed under the current bylaw.
No, that's not right. It's nine hundred and forty. Uh, no, that's the wrong math.
The current bylaw would allow, the current bylaw would allow six, seventeen hundred and something and two thousand six hundred. The current bylaw is four spaces per
Yeah.
thousand square feet. Like this is a huge benefit to the town and it's coming across like this is a horrible thing.
No, it's just a red, it is a reduction. I just wanted to identify what are you reducing from? Again, without a base number, um, you know, what does it mean?
Well, you could say reduces impervious cert, I mean, we could say by approximately nine hundred and forty-two from what the original OS special permit was to a new number, which is thousands less than the, the current bylaw.
Yeah, you can, you can take that. Negatively, I, how does this read negatively? I mean, it says straight off the bat that, um, the applicant is proposing a reduction, right?
It's the, the red text of the, the first full sentence in the red text.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can take that out because we have it up, up above in the impact section. So you can just take out, this would result in up to constructing it. You can delete that.
Yeah, that's fine. Because the other thing is it was just kind of a, a range too, which was kind of weird, but okay. Yeah, that's better.
Well, the range is based on the amount of square footage, right? So. Um, okay, so right after the wastewater, but probably should be before the wastewater, I inserted a water bullet. Um. It's a B. Sorry, I lost my, my own place, but you probably have it, Alec. Um.
Is that a maximum number? Like, they're increasing the plant to eighty thousand, which was the originally approved plant before Cisco. Like they're increasing the plant to eighty thousand, which was the originally approved plant before Cisco reduced it. They're not going to, I mean, at max build out, they might, I don't know. I don't know what they're going to generate. They they need eighty, they're going to restore the plant to eighty thousand. Did they say in the application that it was forty two thousand at max?
I think it's 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 at forty now. It could go up to eighty, but there isn't, there isn't a volume for it to make sense to be turned up to eighty. If that paraphrasing makes sense. Russ probably knows the exact details.
Cindy, do you want to answer that question?
Well, again, we're just talking about what's being proposed. They did upgrade their wastewater treatment plan. It was originally permitted, I believe, for eighty thousand. They got a reduction because of the reduction in occupancy, but they've now gotten a permit. I believe to permit it back to eighty thousand gallons per day. But. But that's because now they anticipate an increase with the new development of another forty two thousand gallons per day. So that's again, maybe not worded beautifully, but.
Is that, where does the forty two come from? Is that from the application?
Either the groundwater permit application or MIPA application. That's I got it from the MIPA application, I believe.
Yeah, I I guess that that I don't know if that's true or not. I mean, I I'm not questioning what the MIPA application says. I just don't know. Like, all we know is they're they're, we know what's in the MIPA application. At max build out, is it forty? Are they going to use the full capacity? Is that what that means that we would have, they would have to go to? If they use another forty two thousand gallons, they'd be at eighty thousand? Is that the math, Cindy?
Yes, that is the math, correct.
And is that what happens? I don't know.
Well, the point is that they've increased the permit to allow for potential increase in capacity back to what their original permit was. Again, this could be probably worded a little bit better. But.
Well, it could be the parks, the the sentence they add, the parks private wastewater treatment plan will be restored to its origin from. Its current eighty thousand to its or forty thousand to its original eighty thousand. And not get into how much water they're going to actually use unless they know the number. And if it's forty two thousand, okay, but that means they're going to use that plan at max capacity. Plus, there's water, I think. Well, this is wastewater, sorry.
This wastewater, and again, it's it's just the math and we can make it worded a little bit more smoothly. But I think it's important to note that, yes, they've increased the. Treatment plan is now back to its original eighty thousand. But I thought it was useful to understand what's being contributed as a result of the proposed. Project, which is forty two thousand gallons plus or minus per day. So.
Russ, did you have something to add to this?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. In the black sentence, the the park's private wastewater treatment plant will. I'd like to get rid of the word will, like that has been completed. It has been restored to its eighty thousand. So just a small bit of history. The wastewater treatment plant and the groundwater discharge are two separate permits from D E P. Both went right in the eighty thousand gallon per day range from Cisco. Cisco, D P changed the standards for the wastewater treatment facility. Back in, D P changed. New criteria, Cisco in two thousand and eighteen did not want to upgrade the wastewater treatment facility. And D E P knocked them down to some gallons per day of forty thousand. When we purchased the property, we worked with D E P to make those improvements and make the investment. And those those improvements have been made to the wastewater treatment plant and they're in place. So everything's in place to be a facility for a capacity of eighty thousand. And what really happens here is very similar to everything that happens in this park. We we need and the MIPA office, your office, your peer reviewers always need to look at a maximum. Scenario, and that makes total sense. But I think, I don't know if it was Chris or someone else mentioned earlier. There is a significant reduction in reality in the four. Hundred and twenty five thousand square feet that is occupied today, give or take. We probably generate about anywhere between four. Thousand gallons to six thousand gallons per day of wastewater. Not even remotely close to ten percent of the capacity at almost half the park. But that's a, that's the very difference between maximum traffic and actual traffic, maximum water and actual water. So the bottom line is. We have a permit from D E P to operate at eighty thousand gallons per day wastewater treatment and groundwater discharge. How how it gets worded is fine. I don't think the forty two oh four four has any relevance anymore. I think Cindy got that from a MIPA application. And when that application was filed, we did not have our D E P approvals to go above. The previous statutory limit. Now we have all of our approvals and permits for the eighty thousand gallons per day.
Yeah, and I, so I think what I just heard is that the park is running now at a frac, a much lesser percentage than full capacity at each of the facilities. So I'm not sure saying forty two thousand is correct.
Well, just like the max numbers that we talked about on project impacts, and maybe we've already used this number up above. But. You know, they're going to build five buildings, but we're, if we're, if we're still the reviewing board, we're going to see one building at a time, right? So we, it's, I just thought it was useful to understand what the max. Well, the treatment plan has a max capacity of eighty thousand gallons. I thought it would be useful to understand. And again, I did pull this from the MIPA application, which was, you know, essentially the max amount of increase as a result of this project. So, you know, we can round the numbers, but it seemed a useful number for folks to have. As the amount of increase related to the project and and, you know, it's all good that the the permit's been updated. The affluent requirements, I think, are more stringent now and they're meeting those. So, you know, it's.
What project? What project are you referring to?
The five proposed buildings as part of the master plan.
Oh, I mean, I think it's a result, well, it's not a project yet. Like, it's not a project until it's a, it's an open space special permit right now. It's a master plan.
You have to consider the master plan. I'm sorry, I'm seeing Mark White's hands.
Go ahead.
I got a question for Russ. Right now, the wastewater treatment plan is operating at what gallons per day?
As we all know, in the world of remote work, Monday and Fridays are the light days. It could be anywhere from in the four thousand dollar range, four hundred, four thousand gallons per day range with. Five hundred less or five hundred more Tuesdays through Thursdays. It operates in the five to six thousand gallons per day range.
So. Basically. The way I look at this is I would take the first sentence and put it at the end. The park's private wastewater treatment plant has been restored to its original eight thousand gallon gallons per day capacity. All the way to the end of the sentence. The. Yield, it yields a net. I don't know how to put it in in the right words here, but but what I'm trying to get at is it's a lot less than it than the eight thousand gallons per day capacity. For which it was originally permitted. So I I just want to put, I mean, the way I'm seeing these reading is. All this is added, all this is added, water, increase in water use, and that's true. But it's also going to be put in light of what was permitted previously. These are less, the numbers are less. So it's a net savings. It's not, it makes it sound like it it's this big net increase from what it is today. Maybe it is, but it's not. It's a decrease from what was originally permitted, from what it could be. If it was done some other way than with a. Then with this special permit. So I I think it's important here to balance the statements. And the following, same thing, will require an increase in water use of so many gallons per day. But is that a net increase? Or is is it more than than the original permit called for? And I think the answer is no, it's less. And also coming from a different source. So in these two things, I don't know how to wind this sentence up that speaks to the increase over today's use, which is four to six thousand. To. Forty to. To forty two thousand gallons per day, which is still well under the eighty thousand. So is that correct? Russ?
I believe it's correct. You know, I hear, I hear what you're saying completely when you compare it to. The Cisco intended project versus our project in every capacity. It's it's a reduction.
That's what the the point.
Right.
But they still have the ability to operate at the max, right? And I think that's what we're trying to just like identify here, Cindy, if I'm not mistaken, like the maximum master plan capacity, right?
Yes, and I think, you know, again, I'm not trying to be.
So say it that way.
There's not supposed to be an opinion here, it's just a fact, right? So let's just clean it up in a way that that states the fact that the. They said that was their language, that it's been restored to its original capacity. But what does that mean? You know, or whatever. But again, this was really just trying to get the facts out there and if we can state it in a different way, they were always designed for eighty thousand. They went down lower. They're now designed again for eighty thousand.
You could keep it to the to the plant capacity. It restored to its original eighty thousand G P D capacity from its prior operational capacity of forty thousand. Like, let's talk about the capacity of the plant.
So that's, one second.
Because that capacity, they have a permit on, like, they could. Like, they can, that can be used to that. Capacity right now, eighty thousand, that's allowed today. This permit has no bearing on that capacity.
Correct, I guess.
Will enable future development, but frankly, they could do that anyway. So like. It it sounds like this is a bad thing and this is actually a good thing, but anyway.
Again, it's not, this is neither good nor bad. This is just a factual statement that came out of, you know, what they anticipate. The master plan calls for an additional increase of forty two thousand gallons per day. And the and the plant has been upgraded to accommodate that amount, however you want to say it.
Well, again, the way I add up the numbers, though, if they're working at four to six thousand now and they're going to increase at forty two, that 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 means that they'll be well under the eighty thousand gallons capacity.
It's not about, I mean, yes, it's it, whatever they generate is fine, but the master plan, my point is the master plan is suggesting an addition of forty two thousand gallons per day. And of 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 new wastewater, I guess incremental wastewater, that's all.
But Cindy, as long as they stay under their original.
Permit.
allowable piece, then I'm just not sure, like, does that matter? I guess, because they're permitted for it.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, you know, if you want to strike it, you can strike it. It's again, it's just a fact of of what the master plan is generating, you know, five new buildings.
Strike it. Because it's. We don't even know what it's going to be.
I think that's a relevant point, too, is that we don't really know what that's going to be.
I mean, each step of the way, as they permit each building, then we'll be looking at that closely.
Yeah, that that's where I was going with the project statement, right? This is a master plan. Projects will materialize from this and determine actual.
Like, at current usage, at forty thousand, they they could have eight times as many. Eight times as much use as they currently have, and they wouldn't even have to go above forty.
And honestly, in in previous projects, not this one in particular, I mean, we've never been able to nail that number down.
Yeah.
To where I feel comfortable, honestly, we're always presented with a very wide range.
And I guess I'd follow on the next sentence, then, the the next paragraph, which is same thing there. It's it's the same type of statement up front. I'd strike that first sentence.
Well, I think it's germane to identify what the water use of a master plan of a, you know, a major development project is. You know, as I would. Say, it's important to understand what the wastewater generation is.
Well, maybe it's the park is it will require the the, you know, the park at maximum build out, right? The park would. You know.
That's fine, yeah, you you can use the maximum. I think that's clarifying language, that's fine.
I think as long as we're identifying what is the allowable use, Cindy, I think that kind of just, that that hits it, right?
That could could require an increase, right? It depends on each use, right? But an increase of up to thirty six thousand.
Okay, again, I'm pulling these numbers from what they submitted, if you want to say, you know, up, yeah, a maximum build out could require an increase, if that's fine.
I'm I'm sorry, if this, if that was in the application, my apologies, then then that's the number. If it's from somewhere else, I think. I don't know.
Is this like taken verbatim from the application? Because if it is, I guess I'm, I don't have an issue with that.
Joanne is shaking her head.
I, if I may, Madam Chair, just to clarify, I believe that these numbers are, again, coming from the MIPA submission. And as I indicated earlier, I'm uncomfortable that using these numbers is a bit misleading just because. MIPA does require us to study maximum build out. I don't think that you can necessarily extrapolate from that, that we will require an increase in water use or that we anticipate an increase. It's that we were asked to study because the regulations say we have to what the maximum would be. But as we sit here at the master plan stage, all we can say is that's the maximum. It doesn't mean that we anticipate that something is going to be this way. We don't have end users identified yet. And I don't know that, again, that it's accurate to say that we will require an increase of X, Y, and Z. Because again, these things are just not known at this time. And this is, I think, the danger of conflating what is required to be studied under MIPA with what we are actually going to end up doing on the site. And so I think precision of language is important. I'm not saying that the numbers don't necessarily, don't have to, shouldn't be in here. But what I'm saying is if they are, then I think they need to be appropriately contextualized.
How about at maximum build out, the park anticipates an increase in water use for up to thirty six thousand gallons? Would that thirty six thousand, yeah, gallons, would that suffice?
Perhaps something like assuming maximum build out, the wastewater would be up to or something like that.
May.
And I don't even know that require would be the right word. It's just, you know, may increase. Water use.
Yeah. Up, strike of. But again, I put that at the end, not at the beginning.
Cindy, how are you feeling about that?
Yeah, just rereading it, it looks okay.
Okay, I'm comfortable with it as well. Russ, do you have a comment?
Sorry, is there a comment coming?
Russ, did you have a comment?
Okay, thank you, Alec. I my, I lost connection in getting back in. Alec needed to allow me to speak, so thank you, Alec. With relation to this, maybe maybe just a small clarification. When these applications are prepared by our engineers. Everything is compliant to D E P Title V standards. So for example, if if we went to the statement that you were just talking about. A maximum wastewater per D E P Title V standards would be this. It's kind of like code when you build a building, a structural beam is sized at eighty percent. It's kind of like code, when you build a building, a structural beam is sized at eighty percent higher than what the load it actually handles. So in this case, both our water and septic are sized at, I forget the factor of safety and conservativeness, but it's significantly more than fifty percent. So we don't anticipate these flows. It's per mass DEP Title V. If the authors wanted to add that language where it was convenient, that's fine, um, whatever the board's comfortable with.
Based on that, I think it's misleading. I, I would strike it. Uh, I, I mean, that's not what's happening. That's a, that's a, it gets back to the point that they have a permit for eighty thousand. You know, and, and, you know, again, I don't know on the water usage, Russ, how that applies there, but you know, these are, these are permitted amounts, they're, which are get back to that word conservative, like very conservative. I, I think it's misleading.
I say strike it.
I'm sorry, what, what is misleading about it? I mean, this is what, I, I, I don't like the term misleading anyway, but, um.
Well, it's misleading in that it, it's saying that it could be up to this much wastewater. And what we just heard is that the plant's designed to Title V requirements, which basically require that you almost double the capacity, or I don't know what the exact math is, but it, they they require a, a design to and a permitted capacity that far exceeds what the practical use is. So I, I think that if we say, oh, this, you know, this is going to be another forty six thousand gallons of wastewater, and that's the narrative, it's, it's not, it's, it's misleading, because that's the, it's permitted for another forty six thousand. It doesn't mean there's going to be forty six thousand. In fact, there very likely will will not be. So I'm just concerned that we're I, I appreciate where the data came from, and then hearing that point on Title V, I'm very concerned that we're, we're, we're not, we're, we're, the, the numbers aren't telling the story.
Well, you can say, you know, it's, it's permitted up, uh, it's, it's permitted to its maximum capacity under Title V, that's fine, but I do think that having some numeric numbers, whether it's the max or not, is, is useful, um, so people have an order of magnitude. Um, so if you want to say up Mac, you know, it's permitted to its max capacity, that's fine, but you have to say what the capacity is, that's all.
I agree with having the capacity in there.
Yeah, I'm fine with the capacity. It's just the, when we start talking about the actual usage of things, is where I, I think it becomes not.
The capacity is right there. They, they entered into agreement for forty thousand gallons a day. If they don't use it, then great. That, that's the maximum, that's the maximum, right there.
If they're not using the well to supplement, which we, I'm not sure whether they are or not, but, um.
So is the assuming maximum build out the park may increase? So now, now you've got the forty thousand, which is the, like, why don't we just leave it at that and get rid of the assuming maximum build out the park may increase water use up to? They've entered an agreement for forty thousand gallons a day. They're gonna, you know, I, it's like now we got two numbers we're staring at.
I don't like the words assuming and may, okay? Those, those don't belong here.
Can you go up to the one above it?
That's good.
Right, terse, just what it is.
Um, so, all right, if we want, if we keep the language in and, and take out the assumption in the last statement, I guess my question to Russ would be, is the, um, is the water line going to be your only source of water, or are you still proposing to use your well in addition to that?
Go ahead, Russ.
Thank you, Cindy. Um, so I have two comments, one about the language on the very bottom of page five, and then, and then clearly your, your question. So what I would like to say here is the applicant has entered into an agreement with LALWD for forty thousand. We have not entered into agreement. I just want to be transparent on that. The intermunicipal agreement between Boxborough and Littleton assigns forty thousand gallons per day to the park. And that was a study done by Lit- Littleton Electric and Water Department before the pandemic, based on usage and, and Title V requirements. So we don't have an agreement, so I just want to be clear about that, and we never will. We will sign a contract with them to attempt to connect to their system when the system's ready, but we don't have an agreement. So that's, so that's just a little clarification. As far as the water needs, um, I don't, I don't, personally, I don't think even at full build, we'll ever need forty thousand gallons per day. However, we've had extensive negotiations with Littleton Water that in the light of a full build out here, because we are, we are not an industrial business park. We won't be using water to perform industrial activities. If we did, we would have to collect that water in a tight tank through an industrial process and remove it from the site, not allow it to go into our groundwater discharge. Um, so I never see us even getting close in reality, but the key to Cindy's question is, if we did, um, Littleton has surplus capacity, and an amendment would need to be made to the intermunicipal agreement to allow further water to come to our park. Littleton would be satisfied with that because they sell water. They'd love to sell more water. However, we don't need to adjust the intermunicipal agreement until there's a need. Personally, I don't think there will be a need. So does that answer your, your question, Cindy?
Um, yeah, I was just, while you were talking, I was also checking my notes, and I apologize if I mischaracterized. I, I thought you had prior said that you actually had an agreement with them, so apologies if I mischaracterized.
No, that's okay. These are complicated matters.
But I, I guess my, my question was, will you supplement? Is it possible you'll continue to use the, the well um, once you connect to the water line? Will you continue to use the well to provide water to your tenants?
The quick answer is no, because, because essentially of the, the, as we all are struggling with, and is the PFAS infestation throughout the groundwater in the region is in our well, and that's why we're working with Littleton to have a municipal, uh, water plant filtrate the water for PFAS, uh, contaminants. So the answer is no. Um, I don't see that in the, in the future.
Um, so, all right, let's just clean this one up. I guess if we take out the last sentence, uh, I think that probably
Good.
suffices to provide some context as to how much water the project will need and how much wastewater the project can discharge. But I, I guess it does beg the question, if you're only bringing in forty thousand gallons a day, but you've upgraded your plant to eighty thousand gallons a day, there's, there's a mismatch there, but if that's a subject for another day, I understand. Um, so Alec is putting in my next comment about drainage. Um, sorry, I gotta catch up with you. Um, yeah, so this statement about drainage systems and utilities were adequate, uh, with upgrades planned as needed. I guess, you know, we don't have a professional opinion that they are. We assume the park is operating to date, um, because each of the site plan approvals have approved the drainage systems. Um, there was no mention about um, any specific stormwater management, so I guess I wanted to identify it, that it, it'll either be addressed, um, during site plan review, but I, I just wanted to call it out. Because we do need to make a finding on this particular topic.
Fine with this.
Yeah, I'm not hearing an opposition, so let's keep moving.
Keep moving.
Okay, inserted the, uh, per the master plan on this next bullet.
Fine with that.
Yep.
Yeah, this was language I inserted. Um, I just wanted to be clear that while, you know, certainly, it's appreciated that the, the easement was granted. I just wanted to acknowledge that, uh, you know, the applicant did receive a, a payment or a fee, um, for that easement.
Is that true?
Chris, did you make a comment?
Yeah, so, sorry, dog is whining. I said, is, is that germane to, to this permit?
Sure, so it's a, it might even.
Okay.
I would say, this part of the record, I think the easement agreement was provided.
And I'd actually change for which it received to, for which the applicant paid an eighty thousand dollar fee.
No, they were, they were paid a fee.
Well, who was, who's paid, who paid the fee? Uh, applicant, no, the applicant paid an, an eighty thousand fee, right?
I think they were paid, Russ, has his hand raised.
Russ, do you want to clarify?
Yeah, sure. No, Mark, um, Littleton Light paid Campanelli eighty thousand dollars, which was a fee that Littleton Light appraised the value of the land, which they were entitling via an easement for the nine point one miles of pipeline through our property. Um, so that was great. I mean, that they paid us a fee. They'll get the eighty thousand back in spades when we need to award them about one point six million in the next six months, so, um, that, that we did receive a fee.
Did you say how many, how many mi- I, I thought I heard a bigger number, one point eight miles, or?
You just said nine point one.
One point nine miles.
Oh, one point nine, I just flipped them around.
That should be one point nine, whoever's got the.
I thought it was one point eight. No?
Well, actually, the one point eight was in the original language, so maybe whatever the right number is.
I'd leave it at one point eight, it's fine.
Yeah.
Um, I just had a question about how many kilowatts do the breakers, you know, I don't, I, I can't convert amps, but I was curious if you could, if you knew how many kilowatts those were?
Yeah, I talked to my electrical engineer extensively about this, and I really after talking to him, you can't convert amps in kilowatts. They're not, they're not compatible to one another, but we spent a lot of time on this, and I don't really one part of me says I don't think it's part of this permit, but what I can tell this board is, um, the existing solar array is connected to building five hundred. It is leased to the occupant of building five hundred. They came to the site because they could offset their electric needs, because they were leasing as part of their real estate lease, a electric generation source. The energy potential that that solar array uses, the, the tenant uses about sixty percent of it. The tenant occupies about, on average, about forty four percent of their space. So if they occupied even their space at sixty, seventy, or eighty percent, which, which I hear they're, they're pulling people back into their office, I see that solar array being used at eighty to ninety percent its capacity. Um, there's, there's not a, a means in which I can provide an answer to your question.
Uh, I, I can appreciate that. I think, um, you know, when we're looking at overall energy efficiency, um, and more for laypersons, um, to understand, you know, we generally talk in terms of kilowatt or kilowatt hours. Um, so, you know, I understand if you don't have a a, a transferable number, I wasn't able to calculate it either, so, and I'm not an engineer. Um, but I was just curious as to what percentage of the total usage of the building and, and, you know, it might be data that would be useful to understand going down the road as the plan, as the park develops out, you know, what kind of efficiencies. I know you said TUV is incredibly efficient. It would be good to have some understanding of, you know, what does that, what does that really mean? How mu- you know, how much are you saving through these new technologies? In terms of, you know, kilowatts, uh, kilowatt hours, you know, or what you would have paid if you were fossil fuel driven, that kind of thing. So I think it's important information for the, for the board to understand, but, um, I understand.
Yeah, I, I will tell you on a request to go to Intel to get their electric bills, the answer will be no.
Okay.
All good.
Um, this next one, I was just trying to, uh, sort of, uh, make this a little more understandable in terms of, uh, you know, I just simplified it basically, a range of seven hundred and eighty thousand to one point four three million, depending on the amount of build out and the valuation of the buildings. I think you provided us some data that's probably in the record on the, uh, cost per, on the amount per square foot, and so I didn't think it was necessary to include it here. Unless others feel otherwise.
Is that the number, seven eighty to one point four three? I was looking at the is that where we landed? I, um, yeah, one point four three.
Yeah, that was in the original, one point four three.
I would, I would just put, um,
At today's valuations.
Put it, yeah, put it to date that like, at, you know, in, in two thousand twenty five dollars, right? The taxes are going to go up. Sorry, Russ.
How about, how about at the date of this decision?
There you go, as of the day.
This is what we wrote before.
Yeah, I, last I heard, our taxes are probably not going down, so, and they're not staying the same, so.
Okay, how are we doing on time, Rebecca?
We are, yeah, nine oh eight, so we've got twenty two minutes to keep moving through this. Let's get as much done as we can tonight. O S C D.
So this is the section that I titled, the findings of fact, but again, we don't have to worry about the structure right now. We can move on.
This is the section that kind of goes through the criteria, right? Is that how we typically do it? We do a findings of fact and and respond to it by section?
Yeah.
Is that a yes? Sorry.
I, I said yes, because that's what I think it is.
Okay.
I don't mind if you do O S C D criteria slash findings of fact, if that's more helpful. I don't think it makes any difference.
And my first comment here comes up on, uh, special permit criteria. Which I, oh, I guess that's a separate section, is that right?
Right, so.
Yes, the applicant has structured this first, addressing the criteria of the open space commercial development special permit, and then of the generic special permit criteria.
So prior to seven point five point six, I think there, we needed to make findings on seven point five point four and seven point five point five. And maybe, uh, so this language I pulled, as you see here, from the, uh, from the decision oh one oh one. But this is a finding, and I'm not sure yet that the board has made this finding, so I just wanted to put the language in there.
Any objection to this stuff?
And my question was about the last sentence about the fifty foot vegetated buffer around the perimeter of the site. Do we have verification that that is in fact the case? Because that is a requirement of, um, this section?
Got a question to me, uh, Rebecca?
I, I'm assuming you can answer it, maybe roughly.
I looked at that quickly when this came through, um, and the answer is yes. If you need, if you need Kelly Engineering to provide you a drawing. if you need Kelly Engineering to provide you a drawing, we can do that. But the answer is the perimeter boundary complies to the previously issued permits for the existing buildings and the buildings yet to be built will comply. So, yeah.
Rebecca, did you want any documentation on that, or?
I don't know that that's necessary. I mean, they have, it says they need to comply with it.
Well, we're making a finding that it does comply, so I guess even just a letter or something, maybe? I don't know. Just a...
Russ, would you be willing to provide something for that, for the board members as a document?
Yeah, the one area I want to point out is Building 200 and Building 300 do not have a 50-foot vegetated buffer because they were approved under the previous OSCD where there was only, the rare setback is 25 feet. So we can put that in the letter. But clearly, what we're proposing going forward will have a 50-foot vegetated buffer or greater to the remaining lots. But the pre-existing construction, as I said to you, complied to the pre-existing regulations.
Adam, could we, could we kick that to you just to verify? I just want to make sure we're on the right side. That requirement, again, this is amendment of a prior permit. I want to just make sure we're...
Yeah, I'll have to confirm that, but I've made note of it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you want to make note that there's a document forthcoming? Or is that necessary here? We just, we got the verbal, we'll have it before our next meeting?
Sure, we can, we can put something together for you.
Thank you, Russ.
The, I, like, I don't object to this, but like, just for the record, like, this is repeating what's in other parts of this decision, right? Not the, not the 50-foot vegetated buffer per se, but like, the 94 acres, the 154 acres, the 71% of land, like, this is a format...
Sorry, those are the requirements of this particular criteria.
Okay, it's, it's in... So it also shows up in B, proposed buildings are designed in harmony with natural features. So I'm just like, you know, result in 248 acres or 71% of the overall site being preserved. I mean, these are, like, I don't know, we're restructuring this, I think is what's happening. Just for the record, like, this, like, this isn't, this is already here somewhere, right? We're gonna move it from somewhere else? Is that what we're doing?
No, this was, this was in the prior decision 0101, and it references this section, and it seemed like the practice to include it as it is, I think, a criteria we need to find for.
I'm fine, Cindy, but it's met, the same stuff is in other places in this decision, is my point, so.
Yeah, similar language is, is under several of the criteria.
That's probably something that we should fix, but it probably should be included here as a criteria, right?
Can I add something, Rebecca?
Yes, please, Adam.
So, so, you know, part of the challenge here is the manner in which this decision has been structured and gone through multiple revisions by different board members. With a, with a typical decision, and this is a complicated one, right? Because not only is it sort of this master special permit for an OSCD, but it's also got a couple of predecessor permits that you're building upon. And so you wouldn't typically have a half a page, or I guess we're now getting closer to a page, called background at the outset of the decision. You wouldn't typically necessarily have two and a half, two pages of findings of fact that are sort of general or generic findings of fact before you make your findings of fact on the criteria that you're applying, the OSCD criteria and the general special permit criteria. You would usually just provide procedural background and then skip straight to the criteria that the board is tasked with applying. But because of the background and the context in which this application arises, you provided a lot of that context, that, that background, that information that sets the stage for the more specific findings you're making as they relate to the individual criteria. So I don't think there's any harm in doing that, so long as you're consistent. Certainly, there's no harm in repeating certain findings within different criteria, whether they be within different criteria under the OSCD bylaw or between OSCD bylaw criteria and general special permit criteria. That's fairly common, because you've got, you've got some overlapping criteria here in the two different sections of your bylaw. So it's not unusual that certain project components might fulfill multiple criteria, which you're tasked with applying. So I don't have too much of an issue with the duplication. Certainly, it adds a lot of bulk to the decision, and that's the downside, that you end up with a much more verbose decision than you would otherwise have. But at the same time, I think that, you know, there's some rationale, some justification for that in these circumstances. Maybe once we've gone through and achieved a consensus amongst board members, or we think we have on what the decision ought to say, then maybe Alec, with my assistance, and maybe the chair's assistants can sort of walk through a more final version of the decision and see if we can pare down some of the repetitiveness if things are being said multiple times, and they don't need to be.
Perfect.
Yep, I think that sounds great.
Yeah, I don't mind it here. I mean, you know, I see what Cindy's trying to do. She's trying to address, address the OCD, OSCD criteria specifically, and if we go down it here, and if we work out the bugs here, then the bugs are gonna be worked out when we bump into it again down below. So I don't mind it being repetitive, and if Adam and, and Alec and Rebecca can then strip it down, that sounds like a perfect way to go. So let's go through it in the next 12 minutes.
All right, so I, again, I did the same thing for section 7.5.5. Just restated the, the text from the criteria. But that was a response that Adam passed to provide us last time, when we talked about, you know, how do we know if it's, how it meets the, the, sorry, I'm just looking at the language here. Limited to the amount of development that could be constructed in full performance with all zoning. I think the applicant provided us with some FAR calculations, which I couldn't find in the record. I hope, Alec, that you have them somewhere, because I couldn't find them. But, so we may want to refer to those numbers, but that was the intent of adding this section and for my question last, last meeting. So that was 7.5, and then...
I just don't like that last sentence, where the maximum square feet is in doubt. The maximum square feet of what?
Square feet of development. That, this is exactly the language that's in the bylaw right now, that's in our bylaw.
Okay.
I just, I just cut and paste it. We may want to remove that, but that's a finding, again, that we have to make. So.
Yeah, fine.
And then, what's the next one? Oh.
And again, this, this applicant in that sentence in red, "The applicant demonstrates that under current zoning, the applicant..."
Right, so this was my, my ability or my attempt to address this finding by saying, yes, they've, they've met the by right amount. But I think the number instead of the square footage, as Adam provided us last time, was associated with the floor area ratio, so I'm really not sure whether this statement is correct anymore. I don't know.
That last sentence is confusing as hell. I don't, I don't think, I mean...
I can't quite parse it.
I can't parse it either. So, so we either have to strip it down and take it out. So I don't know how you condense that sentence. Also, it's worded weird, you know, by right development is 40, you know, including, it's just, which is, yeah.
So I guess, again, Adam helped us last time. He said, you know, you can use floor area ratio, not, because I said that they didn't really provide us with a by right development example, other than what was in the supplemental environmental impact, the single environmental impact report. So I was using that example, but I think the floor area ratio, I don't know, should we use both, Adam, or what, what's the, the main driver here to, I demonstrate that they've met this criteria?
So I think you've got the numbers right. I also don't know that I can take credit for having provided all that guidance. I think it was sort of a group discussion, and the applicant had also provided some information and really had provided the numbers, because I didn't have them. And if these are the correct numbers, I, that took up a substantial portion of the last meeting. We discussed that at length. If these are the correct numbers, then I think that they can be included here. But I, I also am having some trouble following what the sentence is saying, because it doesn't, it doesn't quite read right. So I think what you're trying to say is that the applicant has demonstrated that it could construct by right 447,300 square feet.
Yes, that's what I was trying to say, and that the place that they showed us was this figure that was in the environmental impact report. However, they subsequently provided us with FAR numbers that I think also demonstrated that they are allowed to build this amount of square footage based on floor area ratio.
Right, so, so maybe, maybe we can just take a crack. Alec and I can do it, and then maybe Attorney Schneider can take a look at it too, and maybe just try to work on stating this in a manner. I don't, I don't want to be responsible for putting the numbers together and writing a statement that is inconsistent with what is actually, can actually occur. So I think we can work on trying to fine tune this so that it, it reads more smoothly and is accurate.
Yeah, I wrote this even before last meeting's discussion, so I'm fine with that, if you guys can work that out.
Okay, OSCD criteria.
Yeah, Alex is putting in the edits that I provided.
Cindy, you had a comment here. Condition tree planting is proposed to help reduction of GHG per MIPA commitments. How do we know what extensive landscaping means? Need a specific commitment?
Thank you. I might say that it's tough to tell until we see what we have for an actual building would be my concern.
Rebecca, are you saying that would be addressed at site plan review?
I, I mean, I think the fact that this says extensive landscaping gives us plenty to work with, in my opinion. I mean...
Yeah, that almost becomes a criteria for site plan review of...
Yeah, it's hard to say what the, like, the building is, we don't know exactly where the building's going to be. I mean, it's just hard to say how you would have to navigate that.
Can I make a suggestion, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
So I, I think I might just word it a bit differently. I'm concerned with conditions of an approval in the context of a special permit that are sort of vague or ambiguous from the, from the, from an applicant's perspective, and ultimately from a court's perspective. You look at something like this and say, what's extensive landscaping mean? And although this is a, you know, anticipated to be, I imagine, a quite a profitable project if, if all of these various components or phases are built out, and I don't think that this is something that would cause great concern for this particular applicant. But if I'm an applicant that maybe has a more borderline project that could be profitable, could, could be marginally profitable, and I see a condition that says extensive landscaping will be, will be installed, I don't know what that means. Does that mean I have to spend $10,000 in landscaping, or does that mean I need to spend $110,000 in landscaping? And without that certainty, I might find myself in a position where I have to challenge the decision, challenge the condition of approval, because I don't know what's meant by it. And if you, if we were in a traditional special permit context, what I would say to you is, we need to work through those details now. That's what the permitting process is for. If you want specific landscaping, you have to specify what that landscaping is. You have to ask the applicant to produce a landscape plan. You have to specify species and heights and planning schedule. And, but because this is a master special permit with site plan approvals to follow, and because you have all that authority in the context of site plan approval, you don't even really need to flex your muscle now, because you're gonna have the opportunity to do that later. So you might just phrase this differently. If you, if you, you could, you could eliminate it altogether, in my opinion. But if you, if you want your, your positions to be known as board members that, listen, we're looking at this, and we're really thinking there's gonna be a need for some significant landscaping, and we want to put the applicant on notice that when they come in for site plan approval, they should expect to come in with a comprehensive landscape plan. You could say something like, "The board anticipates that as part of the site plan approval process for phases of future development, extensive landscaping may be necessary to screen and buffer the projects from adjacent land uses," something like that. So now you're putting them on notice, but you're not putting out this vague condition that you have to put in extensive landscaping, to which they can't respond.
So this is a, a criteria, finding in the criteria, not a actual condition, Adam. So I just want to make sure this is the right place for that, as opposed to a condition? I just want to make sure we're in the right place here.
Yeah, so I, I'm not really sure entirely where it ought to go. I mean, that the way that the sentence read before, it said extensive landscaping will be installed. And I guess you could, you could read that to say that that's an affirmative statement telling us what we know, that they're going to install extensive landscaping, therefore they meet this criteria. But it sounds a whole lot to me also like a condition of approval, which, again, as you said, doesn't, shouldn't find itself in this part of the decision, should find itself in the conditions of approval that come later. So, you know, I think we can say it here, we can eliminate it here and say it later. I think the objective here with respect to establishing expectations and also putting yourself in a position, yourselves in positions as board members, where later you can say to an applicant, we, we put you on notice, you, you were expected to come forward with an extensive landscaping plan. I think it just needs to appear somewhere in the decision, whether it's here, whether it's in the conditions, whether it's in both locations. Not sure that it matters if it's reduced to writing and constitutes notice to the applicant of what the board anticipates.
Well, if I may, and going back to the MIPA process, where, you know, that was also used as part of the reduce, proposed reduction of greenhouse gases. So, you know, I do think it's important to have that hook. You know, extensive to me means it's gonna help in the reduction of the greenhouse gases, and, you know, ultimately, we'd want to see some demonstration of that, but it's not the only thing that would help reduce it. So I do think it's important to identify it here, and I think I included it in my list of conditions as well.
Cindy, what are they, they do identify it. I'm struggling with what we're talking about. The, the proposed language says extensive landscaping, extensive landscaping will be installed to provide buffering and shading for vehicles and building occupants. What, what are we talking about?
Well, I think that's Adam's point, is that there's, there's, that's a loosely worded... Well, I think that's Adam's point, is that that's a loosely worded statement, right?
But we're going to require it. It's a part of a site plan approval.
Yeah, it's basically making itself, so that's language the applicant put in. So that's basically them conceding to extensive landscaping being part of a condition of site plan.
Yeah, I'm not going to come back to this special permit to point to, oh, we said extensive site plan. I'm going to look at the site plan where it says substantial buffering, and I'm going to rely on that.
Right, but a condition of this approval, right, well, it's in here, so I'm fine with it. We don't have to debate it.
I would just take, instead of will be, maybe, turn it to may.
I think it will be. It's a huge building at its maximum mark that, at least in a few cases, is going to need a lot of screening.
Yeah, and they say that. They say extensive landscaping will be installed. So I mean, I would just use their language.
Yeah. Change their language.
Okay, so just use the word anticipates. That's the change to it.
That might have broken the grammar of the sentence. Or to just fix extensive landscaping will be installed. Okay.
To provide buffering, yep.
Does extensive need to be capitalized?
Probably not.
Used to be the first.
It was the first.
It was the first.
First word. Is board always capitalized?
Alec, can you go back up again?
Says the board. Do we always capitalize board? That's referring to the planning board?
Yes.
Okay. I could.
Sorry, so not to be redundant, but when things that are in these findings, do we have to turn them all into conditions? In other words, the five public spaces, you know, should those be restated under the condition so that they're all in one place? I would think yes, but I just. Commitments that are being made in the findings should also be conditions, so that needs to make sure that happens.
Do we say that this 23.5 acres appears somewhere else, right? You're just trying to call it out here.
Uh, yeah, sorry, just jumped ahead, yep.
So I'm noting that it's past 9:30, but if we could just push through this section, if everybody's okay with that, just to finish it up, it only goes up to F.
Yeah, my concern, Rebecca, is we're, let's see, what time do we start? We're two and a half hours in, and we haven't gotten to the meat and potatoes of what we need to talk about, which is the timing of all the different pieces. I feel like we're just dragging ourselves through the mud on a lot of detail here, but I'd hate to end this meeting and not have at least had that conversation.
Yeah, we tried to expedite it for the board and the applicant. Unfortunately, that wasn't received very positively, so here we are. We're going to have to go through this process here, so it's just, you know, I don't want to commit everybody to midnight night.
I mean, honestly, I'd rather do that than drag the process out more months.
Well, I think we're through this section.
Almost, yeah.
Did you have any other comments in that section, Cindy, or anyone for that matter?
Where are we? We're on E, F? I was good through this section. F, yeah, through F. My first comment is.
Hold on, I did have a comment on E. That last sentence about the additional open space to be restricted is contiguous to the existing open space. I guess it was a question about Lot 800. I guess it's not clear to me if that's, you know, that's sort of plopped down in the middle of two other parcels, one to the east or north and south, whatever. So is that statement actually true?
The applicant said that everything was connected.
The addition of open space to be restricted. I mean, I guess Lot 800 sort of bifurcates it, but there's some connectivity across the street.
I mean, they have a hundred, they're adding a hundred-foot buffer there, so that makes it contiguous.
Yeah, that buffer should be enough space to, it's all connected.
You're talking behind Lot 800, at the back of the Lot 800, and that's connected? Okay, I just wanted to.
I mean, it's heavily wooded. Where it is now, they're not going to take any of it down, or most of it down.
And there's more of that wooded that is harbored. Do you add those together? And that's a good space.
Again, contiguous means that they touch.
Yeah. And it's not just like, you know, eight inches wide that touch.
Well, yeah, that's all. It's just, if it's a swath, Rebecca, are you comfortable with that language?
I'm just reading it again. I guess my biggest concern is that it's not manicured landscaping and that it's actually left in a native planting state, you know, that can support wildlife and/or birds, whether that be grassland or woodland. That's what I would like to see on that.
Do you want to add such that, you know, to ensure that Lot 800 maintains, you know, certain connectivity? I don't know how you want to say it.
Well, it's really, for me, it's that that hundred-foot setback for the building, you know, it would be great if that was not like manicured lawns and landscaping, but that it would be vegetated with native plantings. Be it, I think it's going to be a combination of grassland and woodland, but it may be just woodland. I could live with either. It's going to need a lot of screening on that side.
So in order to be contiguous, you're requiring that this lot have this natural vegetation.
I'm not entirely sure. I'd have to go back and look at the property line there where it lies with the vegetation there. Maybe I can.
You want to just put a placeholder in there, or?
You should highlight native, Alec, too. That's the bigger of it, but it should be a. So, but that doesn't identify, like, well, I would love to see the setback, the hundred-foot setback held in that, not just a vegetated corridor, it doesn't identify kind of what the expectation is, because that could be two feet, eight inches.
I think Johanna has her hand up.
Yeah, I see that. Yeah, Johanna, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would only observe that it seems that the board may be drifting into imposing conditions where we're still just talking about findings to evidence compliance with the different criteria of the bylaw. We're happy to have a discussion about the conditions that the board wants to impose on the open space, but, you know, to the extent that the board is not capable or comfortable making a finding as to contiguity, that can just come out, and we can deal with, you know, things that are shals in the actual conditions as opposed to findings relating to compliance.
I had actually listed it in the conditions anyway, so I'm okay with that. That's just one of the things that I would like to see.
And again, we're happy to have a discussion. I just want to make sure that, you know, as the board is organizing its decision, the findings are one thing and the conditions are a separate thing.
Okay, so it sounds like some of this might be a better fit for conditions, so we don't necessarily need to do it twice.
Yeah, so strike the last sentence and let's put it in the conditions.
I think he just noted that we're holding it and maybe putting it into the conditions in his noting. That way we don't lose it.
Oh, sure, yeah. So you can copy paste, so you don't have to type it again.
Okay, let's keep going.
I think that was also Cindy's comment for the next, her next comment was also basically a suggested condition.
Okay, so we're going beyond what we had talked about for time. Special permit criteria, can I just take a temperature on how many comments we've got in this section?
I have one comment in this section, special permit criteria. My real comments start when we get into the findings and really the decision.
Cindy?
To that, the decision.
Yeah, most of my comments are to turn things into conditions, I guess, so. So I think I restated them as conditions further below, but I don't want to skip going over these, but.
Well, I mean, I'm looking for a timeframe, that's all.
Yeah. I don't have too many, I don't really have too many comments on this section.
Okay, so let's go ahead and dig into this section then, see if we can move through it relatively quickly.
Yeah, so my first comment is in A. And after, I actually had put language together too, but my comment was that I think A needs to, the social and community benefits needs to call out the ripple effect that this, that the daytime talks about significant contribution to the town's commercial tax base. Following that, there needs, should be a recognition that, you know, additionally, the daytime activity attributable to the park is the potential economic benefit to other Boxborough businesses, in particular, small businesses, which further serves the community by supporting consumer-based businesses for residents and businesses, which is in support of Boxborough's master plan.
So where do you take that on?
I think that goes, what I was, what I think I'm proposing is that it would go after significant contribution rate, kind of almost a third of the way down, after town's commercial tax base, before you get into the donation of the land. Up a little, up a little, one more, before in addition.
Right there.
Yeah, there. I would put additionally, oh, yeah, and I, okay. So that's just my comment, but I had actually written it out to be a nice thing. But we can, we can work with the, like, maybe offline, the specific write-up.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, the multiplier effect is useful to add, but I don't know that I'm saying directly supporting the master plan and creating a village center. It's a little bit outside of the, seemed a little indirect, but.
Yeah, you can end it at businesses for residents, period. Bring consumer-based business for residents and businesses, residents and businesses. Period. And then the housing one is a little awkward, but I do think that local job, I mean, I had rewritten it to say local jobs can also support Boxborough's housing market, which is good for residents and property values. And you could, you could just say local jobs can also support Boxborough's housing market, period, and not make a judgment as to who it's good for, but it can serve as a support for housing values. Support Boxborough's housing market and property values. Period. That was my comment in A.
Are you going to get rid of the directly supporting a master plan and creating a village?
Yeah. What happened, wait a minute, what happened to the? Wait a minute, where did the insert go? What happened? We just wrote something by going, okay. Yeah, get rid of that. Get rid of the directly supporting, sorry. Local jobs can also support Boxborough's housing market and property values. And I mean, we can clean the language up. This was the comment that was there, but I had kind of written it to be nicer, but if that's the concept, we can clean up the language.
In the next paragraph, I had a comment based on Caponelli's most recent response letter. Make a monetary donation of $25,000 to assist the town in planning and design for the lot or for other purposes as determined by the town. Planning and design.
Comments, too.
Sorry?
No, it's one of my comments, too, just to build in some flexibility for that.
Third line down there, Alec, in that paragraph. Assist the town in planning and design for the lot or for other purposes as the town, after the word lot. Or for other purposes as the town deems appropriate, so something like that. Um. Traffic flow. So the first comment about, sorry, let's see. Result in fewer peak hour trips from the previous, that is true based on the data, but I guess the overall project or master plan is to propose to increase the number of average daily trips. So I just want that somehow identified here, because, you know, it's not a net reduction of average daily trips. It's actually an increase.
Increase from what?
An increase from their current proposal, the current permit.
But it's a decrease from the current permit.
It's a massive decrease from the current permit.
The number of peak trips, but the total amount of traffic to be, maximum amount of traffic, and I'll make sure I use my terms correctly, proposed from the development project at full build-out is actually an increase in average, in average daily trips.
Well, an increase from today, that's all.
An increase from the originally proposed project.
Oh, really?
Yes. And they haven't really been talking about that. They've been talking about the reduction of peak trips, but the overall, unless Caponelli has changed their data, but at last, the last traffic report submitted was, I think it was, I have it up above, about 12,000 some odd average daily trips. And that is higher than the original project, I think it was about 10,000 average daily trips. And again, we're talking maximum build-out if it ever happens and depending on the uses.
How can that even be?
Yeah, I'm confused, but.
Parking.
There's like half the park for third parking or something.
There's less actual vehicles being there than originally planned, because it's not office parks. It's things with lots of remote workers. It's things with lots of remote workers.
I'm just citing the traffic study, if Capitelli wants to update that, Russ has his hand up.
I see that. Russ, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I can't say that I'm familiar with the, the traffic report and Cindy's. The way she's reading it, but what I wanted to suggest is I can have MDM transportation. Take a look at that and make, and, and provide a, a statement to the board. I, I, I don't want to venture out to make clarification on this. This is, this is outside of my expertise.
Thank you. Can we make a note that Russ is going to speak to his team? Go ahead, Adam.
Uh, thank you. I, I don't want to go back, but I'm gonna go back. So if Alec were to scroll up a bit, we just talked about Lot 100, I think it was. And we had this additional language for other purposes as the town deems appropriate. I know I had a, I remembered that I had a note in, in my notes from when I reviewed an earlier version of this decision, and I think maybe even reviewed Cindy's comment to this effect. Is, and I guess this is a question, is, because there's some language here within the decision talking about certain lots or portions of property that are being conveyed to the town or conveyed to the town of Harvard or restricted, remaining a part of the property for purposes of calculating zoning compliance. And so I guess my question is, is, is Lot 100 being included? Or is it a part of the calculated open space required for this open space commercial development? And I guess that's sort of a question through the chair to the applicant. Because I just wasn't clear to me whether that, whether Lot 100 is part of the quote unquote open space.
Russ, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. It is included, Lot 100 and the Harvard parcel are included in the calculation for FAR and the, and what we did not include was the lot that was granted from Cisco to the town as the recreation multi, multipurpose lot. I think it's called Lot 9 in the plans, but back when Cisco did the original FAR per the previous OSCDs, that lot was included in FAR calculations and transferred to the town as part of a condition of the permit. In that precedent, we are currently deed and fee holders of those lands as we apply for this permit. And Lot 100 and Lot, the Harvard parcel are included in the FAR calculations with subsequent benefits to the community as part of the, as part of the conditions of the permit.
Wait, Russ, I'm a little confused. Are you saying the parcel that's been, that the town is using for its recreation field, the soccer field is not a part of the total land area that you use in your FAR calculation?
Yeah, I don't have any, that is correct. I don't have any ownership and I've been paid a tax dollar on that lot. And I felt it was completely inappropriate to include that lot. That is not included in our FAR calculations. It's been owned by the town since 2004.
So the 350 acres, is it minus that? I'm, I'm not sure if it's a 9.9 acre parcel? Because that's not what, I don't think that's what the master plan mapping is showing. Maybe it is, but.
There, there may be some numericals and, but the, the FAR calculation is based on 340.7 acres. And excluding the town-owned lot.
So that's new information to me, but that's why, Alec, I guess I'd like to see those FAR numbers again. But we don't have to do that tonight.
And, and through you, Madam Chair, so my, my question was a bit less about FAR, although I understand that that's of concern to Cindy. And certainly I have no objection to, to those numbers being provided and those calculations being confirmed. My concern was more whether Lot 100 was qualified open space. And, you know, FAR does not, is not only applied to open space or, or open space is not the only land area that goes into the FAR calculation. The reason I asked the questions, I just want the board's expectations to, to be what they ought to be. And you've added this language or for other purposes as the town deems appropriate. But the bylaw restricts what open space can be used for. It says that it is required to be preserved exclusively for agricultural or recreational purposes. So you, you certainly don't have the authority in a special permit to go beyond the confines of what the bylaw says in that respect. So you couldn't state that it could be used for other purposes if those other purposes are not agricultural or recreational, if Lot 100 is qualified open space.
I think my comment was meant about the $25,000 donation, not about the land. That's my intent.
Got it.
Should we clarify that a little bit, Adam? I mean, is that not clear?
It, it, it wasn't clear to me, so I apologize if I took us off on a tangent. I just saw that added after the comma. And I was, I, I was thinking it applied to the entirety of that, of that sentence, but I understand the point now that I'm, now I've just reread it. So the idea is that it's donated to the town for public recreation. Maybe we've had a semicolon after the word use. Will be donated to the town for public recreation use, semicolon. And the applicant has offered to make a monetary donation of $25,000 to assist with planning and design or for other purposes as the town deems appropriate, meaning that the $25,000 can be used for other purposes for which the town deems appropriate. That's okay.
Okay, perfect. Okay, shall we scroll down again?
Yep, and just Alec, for your information, I emailed you some cleanup language that you can at your appropriate time plug into where we made that other change. You don't have to do it now, but just cleans it up. I don't have any comments here.
Where's your next one?
Are we on C? What are we on? Sorry.
Yes, we're on C. B was addressing the transportation and Russell's going to provide additional information.
Before you get off B, the very last paragraph in B talks about traffic comment measures. I think again, in Capitelli's most recent response letter, there was some mention of the traffic speed, speed limit sign on Beaverbrook Road. So I don't know if that could, should be added here, but since we're talking about what they're proposing to do, and then it should probably also be a condition if that's a firm offer.
Cindy, do you have that document up that you could use the wording? I can pull it up if not.
Condition to me, not a finding effect though.
Well, they mentioned the other items, so that's, that's all, it can be a condition, but.
Uh, Johanna, go ahead.
I think if the board wanted to add language in the most recent letter was that we would post maximum speed limit signs along Beaverbrook Road. And I think that we're fine having that tagged on after the colon in the paragraph that I think Cindy's talking about.
Did you get that, Alec? I'm sorry, I'm looking at my.
Maximum in front of speed limit, right?
Like, why isn't he typing? He's typing in his document.
There's rarely minimum speed limit signs, so I would guess a speed limit sign would probably do the job.
Fair. I don't think there are any minimums outside of state highways en masse.
It's 10 o'clock, Rebecca.
Yes, it is. Can we get through this section or no?
I assumed I was up till midnight, so I'm. With cranking through, I'd like to get as much of this, through, through as much of this as possible.
Yeah, I, well, I think we'll finish up this section and then we'll, we'll move on to the other items that we need to address tonight. Who's got the next comment?
Um, under D. Let's see, again, I'm jumping back and forth, sorry. So on the, I mentioned that addition of 23 and a half acres of new impervious area. I inserted that, Alec, I don't know if you have that. Sentence would, yeah, and the, the beginning of D. This would be while the overall design and site plan of the 2025 master plan will add 23 and a half acres of new impervious area, comma, the proposal is superior to that. Are we, are we in the right place?
I think that was the previous section D.
Am I in the wrong place?
Cindy, I have, you, you wrote, following the phrase.
Oh, maybe I'm in the wrong place, sorry.
Additionally, the number of proposed parking, parking spaces will reduce from 3.3 spaces per 1,000 to two spaces. And then you added the language for an estimated additional or addition of 892 to 11340 new parking spaces based on the proposed range of square footage.
I think we revised that in the background.
That was similar, very similar language to what was in the prior section above.
Yeah, 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 you can take that, you don't have to insert that. Sorry, I was in the wrong place. Uh, I was just back up on C, we never did talk about drainage and retention of surface water, right? We talked about wastewater, but there's no mention of stormwater. So I don't know if we need to add something there. Maybe just flag that, I mean, it's, I don't know that we need to, a lot, but.
Yeah, it seems like we should have something in there about that.
I have comments on impacts on health. Is it F?
Action F, yeah.
Yeah. And Alec, do you want to? Bring in my comments. Um, above that, that first paragraph says with no negative impacts on the health. I think you, you can't say for certainty that there's no negative, but you can say with minimal impacts on health.
Not anticipated to?
Well, I don't think you can say, it's not a no, I think you can say opposed to minimal. Um, this next.
Potentially enhancing compared to what the alternative is, right? We're going to get more open space. Better setbacks.
What are you, where are you?
You're saying, you're saying there's, I mean, minimal impact to health, it's potentially better.
Um, not if you're adding greenhouse gas emissions, which they are. I mean, it's, you can't say there's no impact.
Well, you're, you're looking at it from zero, from where they are today to the future. I'm looking at it from what the, the potential is.
Yeah, like the, it's the, the purpose of the open space special permit is to the reduction from what would be available by right, like what they could do if they really wanted to.
I see that term clean tech again to here that Russ pointed out. Do we want to change that here as well? Uh, it's at the top of the page, yep.
Yeah, we don't want to use a term that's not defined anywhere because that gets us in weird places.
Where's our next comment?
Lost track.
I'm sorry, what's getting added here? Due to the proximity? What are we asking them to do?
Uh, this was a proposed comment that the applicant would be required to mitigate any identified impacts to the abutting condominium complexes. You know, that might be better left to site plan review, but you know, we heard.
Where are we with that? Where is it? Is it down at the bottom of the page? There we go, thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean.
We don't have any specifics of, of potential buildings right now, so I think it, it, it feels, you know, premature.
What, yeah, what are we going to ask them to do? They're going to be required, there's a requirement we're putting in here, to do what?
Well, again, this was a, you know, it's better left to site plan review. I wanted to highlight the fact that, you know, we're aware that there are abutting properties. And, you know, they would, mitigation to, to any identified impacts as a result of that, that construction, but, you know, I think we were. That could be a, maybe we add during site plan review of, of that lot or something to that effect.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm coming, coming back to Adam's earlier point, I guess, and maybe this is more for Adam, like. What is, what it's, we're saying it's, there's a requirement, will be required to mitigate without really saying exactly what it is. I agree that we're going to look for mitigations. But here in this site, in this special permit, we're saying we're going to require something that's not yet defined. Is that, is that where we should come?
Have we added during site plan review? Sorry.
I know, through, through you, Madam Chair, so, so I had this in my notes as well with a similar concern. I think there were a couple of other. I know, through, through you, Madam Chair. So, um, so I had this in my notes as well with a similar concern. I think there were a couple of others as well. Sort of scattered throughout the decision, just these generic statements that something will be done. Again, they're being stated here in the context of findings, so i- i- if the objective is to establish satisfaction uh, of a criterion within the OSCD uh, standards or the special permit standards. And so you're making this affirmative statement that this is going to be done, so we can check this box and say this criterion has been met. That's one thing, but if the objective is to then reiterate that language later um, in this sort of vague or ambiguous sense that there's going to be more landscaping or there's going to be more mitigation, but you're not specifying what that's going to be. I find that to be problematic, um, unless you're clear that what you're really saying is that the board has uh, an expectation that these things are going to be done um, as part of the site plan review process, which again, you don't really need to say because whether you say it or not, you have that discretion. Just because you say it doesn't give you discretion you don't have, just because you don't say it doesn't mean you lose discretion that you do have. So you're going to get that bite of the apple when it comes before you in the future.
I'd say strike that last sentence.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the purpose and intent of the open space commercial development, uh, in that statute, uh, protecting the value of real property is one of the identified um, bases for that. So I don't think it's such a stretch to indicate that we are looking to protect um, the value of property of the abutters as well as the applicant.
Oh, what if we, I mean, we could say that we would, and, and I, you know, I don't want to go too far with like breaching Adam, what you just said, but like, we could say that the board would expect that the applicant would propose mitigations. I mean, that I don't know if that goes too far, Adam. But that's certainly what I would expect, yeah.
No, I, I don't think it does go too far. I mean, I understand that this is a bit of a balancing act, right? And I don't disagree with Cindy's comment either, that that's a valid consideration. Uh, and you have to make that determination now. You can't grant the special permit based upon a finding or conclusion that you're reaching that uh, the value of abutting properties can, can be protected. And then later deny site plan review, because as you know, you have much less discretion in the context of site plan review than you do in the context of a special permit. So if what's required at this stage for you to feel comfortable as a board reaching that conclusion that yes, the property values of abutting properties will be protected is some sort of a statement that there's an expectation that in order to protect the values of abutting properties and therefore satisfy this criterion that there will be mitigation proposed by the applicant during the site plan review process, um, then I think you could make a statement to that effect, but again, it has to, it has to just express an expectation um, as opposed to just a generic statement that they have to mitigate because they that doesn't tell them what's being, what's, what's required of them. I mean, you're not requiring anything of them at this stage in the process. You're going to require it later.
So can you, um, put that language back in, Alec, and then ask Adam to tweak it perhaps? Um, in a way that is satisfactory? And I'll just reference the purpose and intent of the, um, open space for development purposes, section seven point five point one. And it's protect the value of real property.
Johanna, I'm seeing your, your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only comment I have in response to that is that this language is currently proposed to be inserted under special permit criterion H, I'm sorry, F, impact on health. So if the purpose is actually to assist the board in making a finding as to the OSCD criteria, that's an entirely different section of, uh, the draft permit.
Yeah, it would be under section A, you're right, John. Which is the proposed development conformed with the purpose and intent of the open space commercial development by law, so you can move it up to A and then then rework.
Relocate it?
Yeah, I believe so.
And then Adam will work on the verbiage?
A of the OSCD criteria. I think is what the request is.
Alec, you want to uh, move that?
Or does it go down to G, potential fiscal and diminutive enhancement of neighboring?
It almost applies potentially to both.
Both, yeah. Do you want to make any more notes on it, Alec, or you're done? Do you want the references? It's seven point five point, uh, one, sorry, seven point five point six A and the next one is the H of two point three point five H. It's getting late.
Okay. Anything else on this?
So on G, um, again, I just tried to simplify the
Oh, yes.
Although now we've got one point one eight million. I think it was seven hundred and eighty million to one point three million. Oh, yeah, sorry, that's yeah, this could be reworked a little bit.
Just, just write it the way we had it before. Then talk about the property tax value piece?
Yeah.
Just copy what we have earlier. I hope you're saving, Alec, as we go.
That would be a nightmare.
Proof.
Computer crash. All right, terrific. Anything else in this section?
Nope.
Okay. Um, then I guess we need a, a motion to continue, right? Um, I know we have a kind of packed agenda for our next meeting, but I'm wondering if we could do the next one.
What's our next meeting? Monday night?
No.
We already passed the deadline to post an agenda anyway, so there's no going back on that one.
We have one on the seventeenth and then the first of December. And the seventeenth has two projects on Mass Ave on it. So the next one is December first. And we're entering into holiday season, so, um.
And I'm not seeing others in December. Let's start on weird days.
We currently could push that master plan discussion on the first, could we not?
No, we cannot. Uh, TAP grants are due December eighth, um, so that will be the last opportunity for me to present to the board before the grant unless you simply want to forego your input on the grant process.
Oh, God, no. Um, can we, um, that, that discussion to that is that, um, it, it might not be very lengthy, though my thought is.
Um, last year's presentation took roughly forty-five minutes. Um, uh, Ian does also have a presentation he needs to give on behalf of the uh, climate, so on behalf of sustainability.
Yeah.
I can, I can shorten my presentation down to roughly ten minutes as long as I get you the pre-work and readings well enough in advance, which right now the plan is to get them to you a week in advance. Um, I think we could we could encapsulate both presentations in the span of an hour, hour fifteen, and you could kick off an application by eight fifteen that night. Let's call it eight o'clock for the purpose.
Sustainability committee, um, document, does that need to happen at that meeting?
Uh, the sustainability committee, to the best of my knowledge, is seeking adoption, uh, by the select board in the month of December. Um, and that was a milestone, already moved originally from the month of September or October. Um, so I would be, I'd be remiss if we pushed them further. They're already two months behind as well getting this adopted. Um, I do think we could kick this, if we were to extend this this application to that night, I do think we could kick off by eight PM for the purposes of an extension. Um, we just might linger a minute or two after.
Um, I'm just wanting to, can we take up the other items after this? Are we going to be exhausted?
Uh, the master plan one is a joint meeting with the select board.
That's right, yeah.
That one, no. Climate action plan, yes. You would have complete discretion as when you want to take that up.
So maybe, maybe we do it out of, I'm, I'm sorry to be making the sausage right now live, but, um, if maybe we do the, um, master plan, then this one, then the climate.
That's not when.
I'm not sure we're going to be in a great place at the end of this to hear the climate presentation and I, you know, I think it is important. Um, can we push the climate?
Another meeting in?
On Thanksgiving?
Well, no. I was looking at, so is our next meeting the seventeenth? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that's correct. You have a meeting the seventeenth.
Yeah.
Is there a possibility to do like a week from today or?
Or like the week of the tenth?
Something, yeah, on Monday, yeah. Like, I just feel like one, two, that's two, that's two plus weeks, two plus, two weeks plus a weekend. I feel like if we had another meeting focused on this, we could at least get through the whole decision and not be up till midnight. And give the climate piece what it deserves, give the master plan what it deserves.
Like the week of the tenth, we don't have, oh, the week of November tenth, so in two weeks. What's the, um, minimum? We need to post things?
Two hours.
Forty-eight hours.
Okay, yeah, so obviously not next week, but the week after.
Yeah, again, you know, we tried to move this forward and expedite it, um, for, for people, and that was not received well, so I'm, I'm not really so inclined to throw another meeting at this.
Who, who did, Rebecca, you mentioned that earlier.
Yeah.
Who was, who didn't receive what well? I'm sorry, I'm maybe.
No, no, no worries. Um, uh, at the, um, advisement of, um, Adam Costa, we had a lot of comments that were in front of us that, like the stuff that we went through tonight. Um, we were trying to, um, set up a potential meeting so that we could review some of those things before getting to a public hearing and maybe work through some of them in advance. Um, but
Oh, you mean the private meeting of you and another member to meet with Campanelli?
Yeah, that was Adam's recommendation to try to work through some of this a little quicker and more efficiently, so.
I just don't see how that would jive with open meeting law. Because that would be a meeting of a subquorum of the board with the applicant reviewing an ongoing application.
Adam, I'll let you speak to that, um, being your thoughts on that.
So I can. So there's, there's no prohibition against, uh, you use the term subquorum. I mean, a subquorum is something that's not a quorum. Fewer, fewer, fewer members in a quorum, and fewer members in a quorum can always convene, um, because it's not going to be convening at all. So, so the idea here, and this is what I had discussed, I had had a meeting what was it, a week and a half ago maybe with, uh, the chair and, and with Alec? And, uh, we had just discussed the logistics of this application. Uh, we had a Zoom, Zoom meeting, uh, for twenty minutes, or maybe it was a conference call. Um, and we just discussed the logistics of this application and trying to move it forward and get sort of to the finish line here and the comments were, were made that there are um, some board members more than others that have various adjustments, edits, concerns, uh, topics for discussion relative to the drafts of the decisions that have been circulated. So all I said to Rebecca, um, to the chair very simply was you know, this is fairly common with more complex projects. I've done a lot of work over the years on comprehensive permit projects, forty B projects, and those are routinely contentious. And because it's one-stop shopping before zoning Board of Appeals, there are often many moving parts. The ZBA is tasked with addressing everything from routine zoning matters to wetlands concerns to matters involving uh, uh, septic rules and regulations. And so um, what I often recommend in the context of those projects is even when there's not some board members that are maybe more concerned or have a greater number of comments than others, but we're a board just really needs an opportunity through a member or two to work through, you, you've already heard the, the analogy, the sausage being made tonight. Um, nobody likes to sort of do that at, uh, ten thirty at night on a, on a, on a weeknight. Um, and so what can often happen is there can be these, they're often referred to as workshop meetings uh, with a representative or two, if it's a five-member board, you can have two because two is not a quorum, that would simply meet with an applicant to work through the concerns. Now, those two members can't speak for the board. Uh, you can't officially designate members because you don't want to create a subcommittee of your board. Um, but a couple of members can volunteer and say, sure, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have a, a, a sit down with the applicant and try to work through some of these issues that we know have been raised in prior meetings or are, are, are concerns generally of the board. And you get some of this, uh, some of this tedious working page by page through the decision done at an afternoon meeting as opposed to at an evening meeting with, with the applicant present and the public present and so forth. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Some boards do this with great regularity. Other boards don't do it at all because they don't, they don't like the optics of it, or they, they just don't like, uh, they don't like having individual members meet with an applicant. So um, what I had said to, to the chair, uh, in, in that conversation that she and I and Alec had had was um, that I had no objection to it as long as a quorum of the board wasn't present. But then I recommended that she or that Alex actually um, float the idea with all members of the board to be sure that no member of the board opposed it because I, I didn't want it to be something that had been decided um, in between meetings without a discussion happening at a meeting about this concept of a, of a workshop. Um, and my understanding from her subsequently was that there, there was some objection to that, and so that kind of a workshop meeting didn't happen. If there's still objection to it, then it doesn't need to happen. It's not a requirement, of course. Um, but sometimes it does help to to expedite a process like this.
Okay. Yeah, the explanation helps. So, yeah, I, I objected because I, I saw it on the, from the opposite end of, I didn't I didn't think it was appropriate for a minority of the board to potentially be, be speaking representing the entire board. That doesn't make sense. So I felt it had to have a quorum in order for any, any business to proceed. Um, the phrasing of the workshop meeting kind of makes sense. Um, I think on the spirit of trying to let's get this done, um, I think most of us are are willing and able to, I, I get that it's painful, um, but, uh, to, to push through or potentially add, add additional sessions if we can. Um, you know, to get this through, through to a decision. Um, so I think I've I, I think, uh, Rich and I both noted the, the week of, you know, two weeks from today, like that week, if that's, if there's opening and availability there since, you know, seventeenth feels busy, uh, looks like December first is probably busy, and then after that would be more than a month out, which feels silly.
Just noting that December first is has availability. Uh, go ahead, Mark.
Just on the, on the, excuse me, on that subject. Um, so I, I just feel strongly that this is a public process, has been from the beginning to the end. And it was important that we all hash it out in a room together and as long as it takes, I'm willing to show up. And I know it's hard for the applicant, but I don't think it's going to go any quicker, frankly, any other way. And, and as long as they see us moving forward, at least they know that the the goalpost is in sight. And, uh, and the, the tradition for this board, as long as I've been on it, is that nobody goes and talks to an applicant after the hearing has been opened. Um, so that's why I said no, and I still don't think it's a good idea. I think we can do this where the public can see us. And we kind of owe that to the public is to see us deliberate. That's the whole idea to open meeting laws about, and so that's, that's why I, I objected. And, uh, And uh, as much as I think it might hurry things up, I think I'm willing to do whatever it takes to get it to the end, all of us together, and we'll all get it done. So, and if you have to call an extra meeting, I've never been opposed to extra meetings, I wasn't opposed to this one, and and uh, so whatever date you guys come up with that works for you, I usually am able to make it, so.
And if, and if it's a situation where I don't have any necessarily comments to add, I'm perfectly content to, to be in the room and sit quietly if I have, have, have no objections, I just want the the opportunity to weigh in if it's something that we're hemming and hawing about, so.
Me too.
Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, and, and Mark, you kind of described it, I mean, I, this board has always sort of built itself on public engagement, and I felt that this is a discussion, we, we can all work together as a board on to get there, and yes, some members have more comments than others, but we'll work through it. Honestly, if we workshop it sometime between now and, at another meeting, let's workshop it at another meeting. Like whether, whether it's, you know, I mean, I, I just, I'm open to, to sliding in another meeting in order to get it done. I think we as a collective board can do that.
And it doesn't have to be a Monday, I mean, as much as Thursday wasn't great, but.
I actually don't mind Thursdays.
Okay.
Rather be tired on a Friday than on a, on a Tuesday.
I have tomorrow off, so it's, so it's all good.
So is there another date we could do? Rebecca, you said December first, I'm sorry, I, I don't.
December first is, is available for this discussion.
But do we think we need significant time that we might want to build in something before then?
Yeah, it's five weeks, I mean.
Yeah, it's, it's over a month.
That's, that's, I don't think that's acceptable for an applicant.
Because they, 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 you know, she noted that the draft decision that she provided was in August.
What about the sixth of November, which is a week?
Good with me.
I don't know that. I have an event that night.
Fifth?
I'm in the middle of event season, so I have another one that night and a B L F meeting, so I have a conflict.
Uh, what about the week of the eleventh, twelfth? I have a eleventh is a holiday, state holiday, I believe.
Yes.
Thirteenth, twelfth?
I cannot do the thirteenth.
I'm okay for the twelfth.
Yeah, twelfth is fine.
And then we have meeting on the seventeenth again.
Yeah, can we just squeeze it in on the seventeenth? I mean, you know, I really
Why don't we start the conversation on the seventeen? We won't get through it likely, but we could start it and hopefully finish it on the first.
Well, we have two other things on the seventeenth.
We're, we're gonna be tired.
Yes, I don't do that.
We get to eleven o'clock and we don't want to do it anymore, we're crankier than we are now.
Well, you guys are ready to rare, rare, go today till midnight, so, I mean, let's start it on the seventeenth.
I, I think we, you want, if you
I'd rather do the twelve.
Suggestion was to do a workshop, let's
Dedicate it.
I mean, you know, it, it was fine to meet on an afternoon some week, let's meet on another evening.
I, I, I honestly cannot do multiple board meetings and multiple events and work a full-time job. It's just a very busy time of the year for me, and I would really ask that the board try to designate some time on the seventeenth to do this. Just, we'll start it up again and pick it back up again on the first.
Yeah, we have the other two mass app, applications on the seventeenth, I mean, if we commit to an hour each in those, we leave some time for this.
H- historically, how long does the O S C C D special permit process take?
Haven't done it for about ten years, twenty. As long as it takes, Chris.
We want earlier start time on the seventeenth. So we're not going till midnight.
I think that's a great plan. Um, I mean, so let's talk about it nine seventy-five, we've worked through pretty intensively, something funny. Um, so, I mean, that could be a shorter one. Alec, is that first or second up?
Uh, that is second on your agenda, your current agenda is nine eighty-four, which is specifically scheduled for seven oh five P M. Uh, then you have nine seventy-five, which is scheduled for
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, uh, and uh, if you wanted to do earlier in that evening, the board has at times opened the meeting at six P M. Um, that has happened in the past.
Could do that.
It's fifteen hours. I mean.
Board members?
Sure.
Six P M. On the seventeenth?
Madam Chair, if I may, and I apologize to make this more complicated, but I'm already committed to another client hearing on the seventeenth, and I believe that my client Campanelli would prefer that I be in attendance at the next meeting, where we, where we will be discussing the decision.
Okay, so we're going back to the first then.
I don't think we can go that far, I mean, that's ridiculous.
Any viable day in the month of November? That is not the seventeenth.
I thought I heard the twelfth was okay, Rebecca, I'm sorry, maybe you waited on the twelfth. I thought.
I have a consistent, like, two events a, a week, and I'm just, I'm, I cannot do that and do these board meetings on top of it.
Yeah, I think
Back to back.
On the seventeenth, I think I'm passing on a leadership dinner, but um, how about the tenth? Did we talk about the tenth?
It doesn't work for me.
And the eleventh is Veterans Day holiday, the twelfth, you said no, thirteenth, no.
We're not allowed
What about this?
Holidays?
Did we talk about the thir- the third, it's too late to post, what about the fourth?
I have another hearing for Conscom.
Fifth.
And we said the fifth was no good, that you were out on the fifth?
Yes, that, that whole week is booked out.
Uh, okay, what about the what about later, the week of the seventeenth?
At the fourteenth, was that a potential day? It's Friday, the, the day.
We don't do Fridays.
Yeah. Fridays are off, off limits.
Um, I'm sorry, did we, is the, what about a, a two-timer, the week of the seventeenth, like the twentieth?
That's on Thanksgiving, right? Thanksgiving's the next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just, I can't do it, I can't do it, I've got too much going on here, I can't be doing my job and doing this thing at the same time, it's not going to work, and it's the holidays, I just say we go for the first. It's, we're in the middle of the holiday season.
Well, I'm
We're out of town, I have events like you can't even believe, and they're not short.
I just, I'm just trying to be fair to the applicant, I'm hearing a majority of the board having significant availability throughout the month of November.
Is there a possibility of doing a, I, and I, knowing my work schedule, I'm, I might be treading in dangerous water here, but is there a possibility of doing a uh, like an afternoon meeting? Like not crowding out in the evening, if that's what the inhibitor is or the constraint is?
My constraint is that I start work in the morning when everybody else does, and it goes until midnight at night, that's my constraint. I, I don't have availability during these days. I mean, you, you travel for work too, Rich, you know, you know how this
I, I, I get the work thing, I'm not, I'm not, uh.
Yeah.
It sounds like the first.
Are you making a motion?
Well, I think we should check with the applicant as, as
Um, uh, Johanna and Russ, are you available on the first for this discussion?
I don't have a conflict on December first.
I'm also available.
Okay, thank you, um, we will try to move swiftly through our other obligations and get as soon as we can.
Madam Chairperson, my apologies to cut you off, Adam, do you or someone from your office have availability December first?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you, Adam. Um, so, the motion, do we have a motion on the table for December first?
Madam Chairperson, you had seek a motion to continue this public hearing to December first at eight P M.
Okay.
So moved.
I'll second. Roll call, as I see you, Chris Doughty?
Doughty, I.
Um, Rich Gazzardi?
Gazzardi, I.
Uh, Mark White?
I.
Werner, I, thank you so much, thank you for your
You didn't, you didn't ask me.
Oh, God, Cindy, Mark, that's sorry, I couldn't see you, I couldn't see all the faces on here, I apologize.
Mark with a I.
Okay, and so that's unanimous, um, thank you, um, Russ and Johanna for joining us tonight, and we'll pick this up and try to move through efficiently when we see you next.
Thanks, Adam, enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, two more items to talk about, um. Alec, I'm going to let you run this, uh, that, uh, the budget submission discussion, we do have to finalize that right now for you, right?
Uh, yes, preferably so, um, as promised, I did bring home my login credentials for uh, for ClearGov, which is our budgeting software. Um, the instructions that we have been given this year is to prepare two budgets, uh, a budget A and a budget B, uh, one considering a worst-case scenario, um, that being a, a far more reduced budget. Nonetheless, um, it's my responsibility to prepare budgets on behalf of the various boards, committees, and departments under that broad umbrella of land use and permitting. Um, tonight, we will screen share uh the ClearGov portal, uh, and we will enter your budget indirectly. Um, we will start with budget A, which has been tagged as the override budget. Uh, and then we will transition to budget B, which has been tagged as the no override budget. In addition, and prior to this meeting, you were provided with the last five fiscal years, including the yes, last five fiscal years, so F Y twenty-one through F Y twenty-five, uh, the Planning Board Consulting line item. Um, that was the largest one for uh discussion. Uh, you'll remember that at this past year's town meeting, uh, you did transition your bear with me, my screen just went dark, uh, your all-travel budget was transitioned to an all-other expenses budget. Uh, your two budgets this year were funded at seventy-one hundred uh for your consulting and four hundred for your all-other expenses item.
Are you pulling up documents for us right now?
Yes, yes, so as I said, uh, we are going to start with budget A, which is the override budget. And if this is a moot point, and the discussion is that you want to submit the same budget twice, then that's what we can do. So, for reference, this is what it looks like on the backend for me. Um, what you can see here, it's, it's hard to condense all these different columns, but effectively, right now for F Y twenty-seven, we have zero dollars entered in, that's only because we haven't put anything in. Every item defaults to zero dollars until I tell it otherwise. What you see here is seventy-one hundred, and there's a percentage difference of minus one hundred percent. If I enter seventy-one hundred, you will see that that suddenly goes to a zero percent difference, a zero-dollar difference, and it is level funded to your budget for this current year. Same thing can be said for this item, your all-other expenses budget, and I encourage you to start the discussion here.
Folks, comments?
Yeah, I'm a little confused, confused because I'm looking back at the prior budgets, I hadn't studied this before. There's one line item for consulting of seventy-five hundred, right?
Yes, it has been consistently seventy-five hundred through the three years that I've been here and uh for years prior, uh, I don't know past that five-year mark, we only asked for five-year sample size in the uh, in the historic report, but uh, it's been seventy-five hundred for at least that time.
What if we spent, I'm sorry, did you have the, you, you had the actuals, you sent them to us, Alec, right?
That is true.
Say for here.
And we bank it if we don't actually spend a particular year?
Looks like we went from twelve hundred, five thousand to ten thousand to seven thousand.
I thought we've only, we typically only spend about a thousand, twelve hundred dollars, and one year, we, I think it was the year that the Planning Board had the consultant for ten. The debit is the amount we spend, is that?
Yeah, so, uh, real quick, I do just need to note one thing, so I misspoke earlier, um, in fact, your I, I can't speak for line-to-line transfers, I can't see if a line-to-line transfer is done. But the way you read this is the credit shown here is your supposed starting balance, now that number can appear differently um, if you at some point during the year or if the, the administration team at the end of the year do a line-to-line transfer. Case in point, uh, in F Y twenty-three or F Y twenty-two, this, no, F Y twenty-three. Um, this was the year that I uh came on board, and when I got to the board, as you can see, a variety of legal expenses had been billed against your consulting budget. Um, very quickly, myself and the accountant at the time had to put a stop to this, we figured out where the disconnect was. I, at that time, began having your applicants pay those expenses, which again, not to toot my own horn, but I'm rather good at getting them to, to be willing to front that bill. Um, and so we got that spigot turned off. But that year, you had budgeted seventy-five hundred, as you can see, we had to do a line-to-line transfer because it had already been deficit spent. I can't speak for why it had already been deficit spent, but it was deficit spent by the time I got there. So what we did is, at the end of the year, we did a line-to-line transfer to reconcile the whole thing uh, so that it wouldn't actually be deficit spending at the end of the year, and it wouldn't ding us in the audit. So, as I read these reports today, in F Y twenty-two, you had five thousand in your budget, and in F Y twenty-one, you had twelve hundred in your budget. For the three years I've been here, F Y twenty-three, F Y twenty-four, and F Y twenty-five, you have always had seventy-five hundred in that budget. Just wanted to make that clarifying statement.
Yeah, but how much have we spent? Like, I don't think we've come close to five hundred, right?
In F Y twenty-three, the, the tricky year that I noted, uh, you spent ten thousand, five hundred, forty-five dollars uh, in F Y, let's go all the way to the, to the front, in F Y twenty-one, you spent one thousand, one hundred and seven dollars, uh, one hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents in F Y twenty-two. So we said the ten thousand plus, uh, sixteen hundred in F Y twenty-four and two thousand ninety-two in F Y twenty-five.
Yeah, our run rate is like fifteen, you know, somewhere between twelve hundred and, and eighteen hundred dollars or two thousand. The ten thousand is the study, I'm pretty sure, and that was a, I thought it was a separate article.
The ten thousand, the ten thousand in F Y twenty-three was almost exclusively legal bills um, that should have been billed elsewhere, if you take those out, um, it leaves you with roughly these two expenditures here, uh, Barrett Planning Group and Environmental Systems, which would have clocked you at just under three thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, the fair number, honestly, the fair number is somewhere between fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred, fifteen hundred and three thousand, I, unless we have something specifically we're planning, which then we should go and pursue, but like, I, I don't know how we ask for seventy-five hundred and only spend twelve hundred.
I, I still have a question about legal expenses, and I know we get pushback um from the other um, other folks in town, um, on other boards about it, but if we have a legal expense that we choose to expend out of our budget, um, you know, and, and we're using it to you know, get some technical expertise, and it might be, it might be illegal, and it might be you know, get some technical expertise, and it might be, it might be in legal, and it might be technical expertise in groundwater permitting, or it might be technical expertise in hazardous materials, but it's still considered technical expertise. You know, I am concerned that we don't have the funds to, to spend that on our own, and if the town doesn't approve it, then we have no means to get that expertise. And so that's why I'm reluctant to reduce the budget. Um, whether it's legal or other, I think we ought to still have a budget that allows for that. And I'm concerned that, um, you know, we get, I mean, that's two hours of legal time is twelve hundred dollars. So five hundred dollars, six hundred dollars an hour. So, you know, you reduce that, and we really don't have much. I'm not sure what place's current, uh, hourly rate is, maybe two fifty an hour, three hundred an hour, Alec, do you know?
Uh, not off the top of my head. I don't have the rate sheet.
I mean, we should know that, because I think it's really not a, a number that we're pulling out of the sky, but an actual number of hours of technical expertise that we might need, so, um, you know, we should have a basis for it. I mean, don't you have one of Susan's invoices handy you can check, or Bill Murray?
Uh, Barry did an email, so, Mark, bear with me. Sue Carter's rate is one sixty-five an hour.
That's a bargain.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's a bargain.
Yeah, that's a municipal.
I'd love to say I'm a great negotiator, but they are, they are, um, they are very good at what they do, and they come at incredibly reasonable prices.
And what about Green Associates?
I don't have a rate sheet for Green Associates, because all of our projects with them have been billed at a, um, at a scope-of-work and a project-by-project basis, so it's done by completion milestones. I don't have a, a current rate sheet for them.
All right, well, one sixty an hour sounds incredibly inexpensive, but I would say most consultants who are not attorneys are gonna be charging, you know, two fifty to three hundred for a, you know, relatively senior person, so.
Shouldn't have said that out loud.
Why is that?
Because now they're still raising rates. What?
And what, I will note, most, um, most municipal consultants do offer a municipal rate, because we do offer work at a higher volume than many other private clients do. That is at least the case, um, in both the case of KP Law and me, Talimran Acosta, um, as an example, and it's certainly, uh, the case in many engineering examples. I have never seen Sue and Bill's rate sheet for another client, so I don't know that we aren't also receiving a municipal rate.
We probably are, yeah.
And so this, I'm sorry, this is all in case we needed to cover a legal expense?
No.
No, I guess it's, I mean, wasn't it applicable to the traffic study thing too, and we asked for a little extra, like another, um, look? Wasn't that?
So as an example, yes, this account can be expended if the board has specific projects or additions to projects that they want to pursue, whether that's independent study of an intersection, um, independent evaluation of a, of a piece of land or soil type, et cetera. Additionally, and, and I stress, this is the most important, just in the way that we do Planning Board accounting here in Boxborough. Um, if you run into a situation where, most notably in a site plan review application, an applicant is unwilling to cover an expense, however, you don't feel in your current capacity that you'd be justified strongly enough to warrant a denial, the only way for you to go out and get those answers is to hire an independent third party. You can still have the work done, but I can't always guarantee you the consult, that, that the applicant is gonna pay for it. I've gotten good at building that relationship with them, creating the foundational piece, so they are willing to help cover those expenses, because they see the work the board is putting in, and they understand the process as it's going in. It's a lot of just transparent communication with them, but I can't guarantee you that's always gonna be the case. Every once in a while, you're gonna run into the person who just clashes with my, my approach, and they're not going to be willing to cover something, and you might have to be asked the hard question. Well, do I deny this project? Do I approve it without feeling comfortable with the information I have in front of me? Or do we have to come up with the money somewhere to, to pay for this analysis?
Go ahead, Mark.
So, the fact is, we haven't spent a lot of money in the last few years. And that, and they're coming on to hard times in Town Hall. So they're looking for places to cut, so they're gonna look at us and say, well, you guys haven't spent the money, and how do you justify it? And we say, well, because we might need it, and that's kind of worked, but it doesn't work so well in hard times. If they're coming for Prop Two and a Half override in the spring, it's hard to sell a budget that they have to raise and appropriate the money for, um, when it's tough. So I'd say, maybe we go with twenty-five hundred, and then we get a commitment, though. I think the thing we would ask for is a commitment from the Select Board or the Finance Committee, whoever we need to talk to, that we would get a reserve fund transfer in the case of, uh, emergency. And I don't think they'd say no to it, um, but we probably have to make a case, and, and, you know, they've, they've never really said no to stuff like that, and they know when we kind of bump into a hard situation that we're gonna need the help. Uh, and, you know, politically, it would be stupid for them not to do it too, and there's always money to be had in the reserve fund, so I don't think, um, I mean, I like to have the money there. I mean, we, we've tried to keep it there, but I think we're in kind of exceptional times right now. We have to understand that, so, um, so I'd say bring it down to something more reasonable, like, you know, three grand instead of seventy-five hundred, and then make the case, you know, in the following year, if, if, if we had to come from war, then we can make the case, but there's always access to, to, to money. You just can't guarantee it. But I'd say the odds are pretty good. And, uh, if Alec wants to run it up the flagpole at Town Hall and say, well, you know, what's the odds of a reserve fund transfer under these kinds of conditions, you know, that we have an application, and the applicant isn't gonna kick in on the, the legal or the engineering, and we have to have it, I mean, I don't see they're gonna say no. So I don't feel utterly exposed by not having the budget that we've had, and we haven't spent it. I mean, only, only one year did we dig into it hard.
We might have mentioned this, but where does it go if we don't use it? Does it go back into the fund?
It, it goes back into, well, yes, but it's, it's, it's taxed, so ba- basically, when we ask for it, then we're gonna pay tax to have that money, and then that money goes into free cash eventually, or someplace where it's still there. So it's not like the money, you know, didn't go, get used, or at the end of the year, they can roll it back over into the next year. So, I mean, there's ways for accounting for it, and, and, you know, that's always what I said, is like, well, if we don't spend it, it's not like, uh, it goes poof. It doesn't go poof. It's, it gets spent for something else. And trust me, they use that money that we didn't spend for other stuff in, in years past, because that's just how, how the system works. They'll borrow from here and move it to there. That's just kind of how it works, so, um, maybe they should be thanking us for giving them a seven thousand dollar a year slush fund, but, but I, I don't see that happening when, when I got wind of the stuff that's coming down the pike. I mean, it's gonna be, uh, May is gonna be a very interesting town meeting for money.
Be helpful to know what they're talking about in the way of an override, but I just want to point out, I'm looking at the reserve fund transfer policy, and, uh, you know, their criteria is, reserve fund is used for, quote, "extraordinary" or unforeseen, unquote, expenses as determined by and according to the discretion of the Finance Committee. And if the committee finds that an expense does not meet the above criteria, it will reject the request, and the reserve fund transfer will not be implemented. So I think we have to assume that we, getting a reserve fund transfer, you know, would have to be a pretty, um...
Unforeseen. I mean, that, that's.
Well, unforeseen, but, you know, a technical, uh, uh, amount, I, I could, I could see that we might have a hard time getting, getting, I'm just saying, don't expect a reserve fund transfer, um, you know, if we're gonna have to live with a lower budget, then, you know, that's a choice we're making, but I wouldn't expect the, uh...
You'd have to make the case.
Have we been denied a reserve fund transfer before? I mean, do we have real experience where a board has been denied it if they need it?
I've heard some FinCom discussions about reserve fund and whether they're eligible or not, um, so, you know.
Is there a FinCom member here tonight? Is anybody? I, I can't, I can only see you guys.
Maria and Kristen and Becky, they were on FinCom, you know, asked, but I, I don't, I don't ever remember asking for money for, for a reserve fund transfer, not getting it, but, you know, I'm sure it happens.
Why don't we ask, if they're here?
Is anyone previously a member or currently a member want to offer some, go ahead, Maria.
Somebody's gotta unmute Maria.
Can't hear you.
Uh, Maria has been unmuted. I don't know if there's a microphone problem.
We can't hear you, Maria.
Sign language?
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Well, I mean, the policy is what it is. I, I appreciate that, you know, it'd be helpful to hear from them, but I'm just saying, I don't think we should plan on it for a technical review if it exceeds what, what we need, because it, I'm not sure it would fit into that criteria, but.
Well, here's the other end of it, is if we ask for seventy-five hundred bucks, then what do you think the FinCom's gonna do this year? They're gonna say no.
Are they gonna say you get three?
Yeah, say you get three.
Well, how are other departments cutting? I mean, yes, I understand the need, maybe everyone's cutting.
Those departments have spent their budgets every year, so when they come back the next year and say, well, we spent it last year, and we spent it the year before, um, but we can't say that. We, they're gonna look at our budget and say, you haven't spent your budget, so why, where's your case for needing it? And we're, we're saying that we need it for an emergency, like, uh, you know, but, but we haven't used it for that yet, so.
I actually have data going back from FY sixteen, and the actuals are higher than, um, over the, those years, and, uh, we, if, this was a spreadsheet that was sent to me from, I don't know, somebody in accounting, because it looks official, but seventy-three hundred and thirty dollars in, uh, FY sixteen.
But if you don't know what it was, and if it was all for attorney's fees, and Alex now getting mostly from the applicants, then.
Could be, could be.
I think that seemed to be the general gist of Alex, we're very good at talking applicants into paying their way, whereas we just have, the town has footed the bill previously.
I, I mean, I've advocated for that seventy-five hundred for a number of years, and we've gotten it, but I, I just don't see it happening this year. Uh, you know.
I agree.
For it. That's what I'd say. Put in for seventy-five hundred and see what they say, but I, I know, I know what the answer is gonna be.
I, I, I think we, like, we're the board, right? I mean, what, what have we spent this year? I think I saw the sheet. It was like two thousand? What do we, what do? So we're, we're pretty far in this year.
Does that include the, um, the request for the, um, parking, I'm not, um, traffic additional site?
Uh, no, this is bookended at June thirtieth, so this doesn't capture anything in the current year.
Oh, what, what, what have we spent this year, year-to-date?
Uh, I don't have that number right in front of me. We, and, and error on our part, we only asked for the past five years. I didn't ask for the year-to-date.
I, I suspect that we're probably hitting the top of our seventy-five i- if we ask them for additional work. I mean, that, what, that's fifty-five hundred dollars. That doesn't get us very far with a consultant.
Are you talking about the traffic consultant?
Yeah.
And did we get an estimate from them? I, um...
I have not seen, I have not seen the estimate from them. Um, I have to follow up on that. We did recently get an invoice for them, but I have not seen an estimate with the cost escalation and change order, so.
Did we, and is that a change yet to happen, or is that something we already did?
Yeah, what are we waiting for from the traffic consultants?
So, so we had everything.
There had been discussion at the time of the presentation, um, a couple board members had been interested in potentially seeing an additional intersection or potentially one to two intersections, having the timing redone, um, just based on the, the length of time it's been since June twenty-twenty-four to now. Um, but I don't know that an official intersection was selected. Um, I think we are waiting on our consultant to give us that cost estimate, so we really need to get that from them, so you can finalize your decision.
I think the discussion was in, at least from my comment, was in and around the intersection at Hill and Burrows and One Eleven. I, I feel like part of the challenges is that we, as a planning board, don't know what's coming down the pipeline, which is what kind of worries me, is that it's so unpredictable that you don't really know what you're gonna need to, to, you know, ask for. It's, it's so, I don't know, I have a little bit of a comfort level holding on to something so that seventy-five hundred dollars doesn't get us very far, right?
I, I agree, but we haven't spent it. We're gonna get smoked. I mean, if this is an override year, it, I mean, every line item's gonna be questioned, and if, when you look on the sheet, it's gonna show the past two years, twelve hundred, and now we're asking for seventy-five hundred, it's gonna get cut on the floor. I mean, I don't know for sure, but like, I could predict that that very well could happen.
Again, it, it, look, there, there's two options here. Go, go in with a lower number and hope that they'll give it to us. Go with a high number and see what they do, do to us, but, I mean, those are your two options. So go in with the seventy-five hundred and see what they do to it. You're gonna have to go talk to them, make the case.
Can we get some data around the, the ask with the, um, the traffic consultant? I mean, because I feel like that's relevant to this conversation.
I, I can, I, but I can't get it to you in time for, well, your next meeting is outside the deadline. I have to submit everything. So yes, we can certainly get that for you in time for when Rebecca, you and I will be before the Finance Committee to help answer questions and, and discuss the submission as it's put in. Um, I just don't have that in time for, for us to hit submit. Unless the board wants to authorize the chairperson to, to submit the budget, um, in which case then I can, I can just get on the line with Green International tomorrow, try and get the quote to you by Monday or Tuesday, and, uh, you and I can sit down on a call Tuesday or Wednesday and, and just go over what you want me to submit.
You have no problem authorizing Rebecca to submit the bu- budget.
Not to exceed what we currently have, perhaps?
Go, again, I'd say go for it, but, but.
Yeah, you're gonna get stuff thrown at you if you.
Yeah, you just, I mean, I, I don't know how, how that's gonna work for you.
Yeah, I mean, if we have a quote.
I guess you're not gonna know until you go.
We will know until we go, but.
Finance Committee, that's what, you gotta sit down with them, make your case, and then see what their pushback is. And I, I pretty much know what their pushback is gonna be, so the question is, is you're gonna have to answer that with some estimates of, of your costs coming up.
This, this'll end up being a conversation with the FinCom. I mean, you don't even get to the, as far, like, I mean, if, uh, because they're, they're gonna consolidate all the budgets from all the departments and boards, and so we just have to have, like, I'm okay with saying, all right, this is what our number is. We'll get the quote from the consultant, and then we'll, like, we, we probably need to understand what else is in front of us, so that we, I get the unpredictability. It's okay to have margin, but five thousand of margin is a lot.
So I still want to understand whether we are allowed to hire Adam Costa as special land use counsel to the Planning Board outside of permission from the Select Board?
No, not without permission, but that permission isn't the Select Board. It's been delegated to Mike.
And the budget for that all has to come.
Any request for legal counsel has to be approved by the town administrator. Even when I want to pick up the phone and talk to one of our attorneys. And talk to one of our attorneys about something I think is going to go to litigation. That's got to get approved by the town administrator.
And therefore it comes out of a different budget, not a planning board budget. Is that a firm policy? I want to understand that.
The, the guidance we've been given is that everything goes through the town administrator and that legal budget. If it's something that's totally outside the bounds of the, the, the legal budget, then yes, there's a world where you might be paying for it, but. It still has to be approved. Any legal cons- consultation has to be approved by the administration.
It's important to understand which budget is coming out of.
Right. And, and we don't just come to you with rogue legal bills saying, oh, by the way, pay this. If you ask for something, the policy has always been, I go back, I talk to the town administrator, if need be, talk to the select board, but that hasn't happened in my tenure. Um, talk to the town administrator, confirm we have permission and then I initiate the communication depending on who the attorney is.
Okay, but you're not answering the question. I want to understand firmly, does the pla- is it possible to use planning board budget for legal consultation?
Is it possible? Yes.
It's our budget. We can do whatever we want.
Well, I'm told otherwise, and that's why I'm trying to understand and.
Okay, use our budget to go hire counsel without permission from the TA.
No, that is not allowed.
And if we don't get permission from the TA, then that budget that we were hoping to use for perhaps a legal expertise, we can't use for legal expertise. Is that correct? If we don't get permission. From the TA, we cannot get legal expertise.
I don't know if that's true, Alec. I mean, we, we have control of our own budget.
I don't know, Mark. I've been told otherwise. That's why I'm trying to get a fine point on this.
I, 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 I think, I, I think we're going down a very different path entirely unrelated to this. But the way that any municipal lawyer works is that the select board or whoever they delegate authority. Is the only one who can contract with an attorney. Otherwise, you run the risk of boards and committees hiring their own attorneys to fight each other, and that's just poor practice.
Okay. So I think it's a safe assumption to not include. Funds for legal counsel in our budget estimate, that we're not going to be able to access this. So that's how I perceive it anyway. So.
So you're saying if it's, as long as it's not an attorney, then it's fair game on our budget. So if we want to go get a consultant, we don't need permission, right?
Yes.
So only for a legal counsel.
Yes.
I, I'd be curious to ask that question myself, but. You know, it's been a bone of contention for a long time here. So, you know, we've been down this road before, but. But again, right now, I, I don't see that we're going to need that. So I, I, unless we could point to a, a, an instance where we're going to need it. I don't see why, why they would give it to us.
So Rebecca, it sounds like you would still like to get one number back before, before we hit submit on this. So I would recommend the board make a motion. Authorizing the chair to submit budgets on behalf of the board. Um, up to Rebecca, you had, you had set a number. Do you want to set that at seventy five hundred, which is what it had been in previous fiscal years?
I mean, if, if everybody's okay with that, I just think that that's a, a relevant piece of information because we've, um. You know, we know it's out there. So.
So you would see. Another, hold, hold on before they do the motion. Another option is, um. I mean, we haven't come close. If you, even if you went in at five thousand. Right? It, it's still plenty of room and it shows that we are. You know, we, we need, we, we don't, you know, we, we, there's some uncertainty, but we understand and, and we're, we're taking a reduction. Optically, that might be better.
Yeah, volunteering a, a modest reduction.
I still feel like I'd want to see where that thing came in. And then if we can bring it down, we can bring it down, Rich, but, um.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, what you've got to show for, for invoices. That's what you get to work with. But if you can only show three grand worth of invoices and then the year before that was twelve and the year before that was twelve, you're going to have a hard case, time making a case for five.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just, you know, the way it is. So. I, I, I'd say, I, I'll, I'll give you carte blanche. You can go in and ask for as much as you think you can get. But. I just don't know what realistically you can expect them to, to say yes to. A, and again, I, the way I've always, you know, put it to them is, look, you get it back if we don't spend it. So that part. But again, they're looking at the effect on everybody's tax bill and everybody's going to be squealing. Next year. And they're going to say, how come you didn't, you know, squeeze every nickel you could find? That's, and that's the FinCom's job.
I mean, I would be supportive of a slightly reduced budget, um, with the caveat that, you know. Or the understanding, I guess, that we're not allowed to spend any legal expenses, but any other consultant, you know, we can get twenty out, twenty five hours or something out of it. Um, for five grand, you know, I mean, I'd be, I, I think it's important to, to show a little bit of movement on the budget as well. Um, but Rebecca, I think you, you should get that scope of work from Green. Because if we've already got a scope of work in front of us, then that's.
Right. Then you can point to something.
Yeah, agreed.
We need it for this. That, that, that's really what you need.
If we can, if we'll, we'll get the document, we'll find out what that magic number is. And then if we can reduce. We will try to reduce.
Yeah.
At the consensus.
Yeah, I think if, yeah, you got the seventy five hundred, if you can find a path to getting, showing some reduction based on all that, then do it.
Okay.
Madam Chairperson, Madam Chairperson, you would seek a motion authorizing the chair to submit budgets on behalf of the planning board for fiscal year twenty seven. Up to seventy five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, moved by Mark White, seconded by Cindy Markowitz. As I see you, Chris Doughty.
Doughty, aye.
Mark White.
Aye.
Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz, aye.
Rich Kuzardi.
Kuzardi, aye.
And Burner, aye. Thank you. Okay, last topic. You're going to get your midnight meeting. Um, Priest Lane bond release. Alec.
All right, Madam Chairperson, thank you very much. Uh, the Geneson Brothers have, uh, have filed for a complete bond release. You'll remember the board had reduced it to twenty five thousand at a previous date. Noting that the binder coat needed to sit for the entirety of a winter prior to being able to do top coat paving. Um, Sue Carter, uh, has recently been out for final inspections, um, for reviewing the site. Um, Ian has been doing a great job. Uh, we let Ian take, uh, take charge of this bond release, just running through the checklist, reviewing the different materials. Um, evaluating the different topics. Um, one item that had come up at the time of the last, uh, bond reduction. Um, was a matter of a stone wall. Uh, and we had to do some digging into this because Priest Lane itself is not a scenic road. Um, you'll remember your decision had alluded to a, a stone wall permit being filed if any stone walls were going to be moved, removed, et cetera. Um, but a fundamental component of land use is that you cannot apply. Uh, different permit types without them being already subject to it. So for example, you can't say. That a project at this location is subject to a stone wall permit if it is not on a scenic road. Your stone wall permit is directly tied to scenic roads. Um, so in that instance, unfortunately, that permit type is not valid. Um, you know, it's my understanding, I was not here at the time of this permit, but it's my understanding, this one went through the wringer. It had to, it had to go through a, a little bit of a legal battle. Um, it was coming off the heels of another legal battle. Um, and so unfortunately, I, I don't think you got, um, the best advice on that one condition. I think it could have been better addressed if there were concerns about how to mitigate. Um, the removal of stone walls, but in this case, whether there were or weren't stone walls, whether they were moved or not. Um, this site is not subject to a stone wall permit. Um, and so unfortunately, that's not, um, an avenue. That's not something that they're obligated to do, um, and they would win on a challenge of that basis.
Do you have a copy of the decision, Alec?
Uh, yes, a copy of the recorded decision is included in your packet. Uh, we included the original change rider, so that is when we reduced the bond, uh, the endorsed set of plans, the bond release request. The closeout checklist that Ian tracked down and ran down multiple people, town officials included, to get all the information available. As well as the decision and, uh, the as-built plans. The new materials for reference are the, uh, the bond release request, the as-built plans and the updated closeout checklist.
So what's the issues?
Uh, no issues. Um, our consultants, um, and various town officials, uh, correct me if I'm wrong at any point, Ian, but. To the best of my knowledge, all town officials, all town consultants have signed off on this one. Final inspections have been done. Um, to their credit, they did a great job. They kept the site clean. Uh, there was minimal concern or question throughout the construction project. Outside, a construction process outside of the typical, oh, my neighbor is doing something. What's going on? What's happening? Um, they ran a clean site. They ran a clean operation, um, and, uh, I was impressed with the work I saw. So.
Okay, so there's no issues?
Nope.
No, uh, no neighbor complaints, concerns, work not completed, somebody's drainage is.
Outside of the, the typical stuff of, you know, my, my neighbors cutting down trees, what's happening, what's going on? No, nothing. It was a standard cut and dry, which is not unheard of. It, it, I know this was a subdivision application, but. It was two homes. Typically, you'd see this done by A and R and, um. And just simple building permit, but in this case subdivision was the only mechanism to create the frontage.
Alec, um, you see, I'm looking through the checklist now. I'm sorry, I didn't really have time to look through this ahead of time. You're, the dates that you put in eleven eighteen, eleven eighteen, is that? Two thousand and eighteen or is that November eighteenth of some unspecified year?
Uh, that was in twenty twenty four when they came in to first request bond reduction. Yep. In hindsight, I will update in the future. My own checks will be, um, twenty twenty, I'll, I'll make sure to include the date on it. But when we first put together this checklist, we kept it rather shorthand, assuming these things would be done much quicker.
Um, and, but I don't see the landscaping sign off because that was an issue too, was, um, and I'm curious about the stone wall issue. Uh, I wanted to go back to the. Decision. I don't think we were wrong in whatever we said about the stone wall, because it was an issue at the time and it might have been in the original subdivision. So I'm not a hundred percent.
Why is it signed off?
That the issue is. What's that?
Why is it signed off? It's checked off. Subject to conditions, stone walls. Confirmed eleven eighteen. Twenty four.
I thought Alec just said something about the stone wall doesn't apply and I didn't understand that. I'm sorry, but I'm just looking at documents while you were explaining it.
Yeah. So best way to do this, um, Cindy, if you can give me the specific condition number you want to go look at. And it does correlate with the number on the closeout checklist. So whatever number that is, um, point me to it.
And then you, you referenced the stone wall. I'm sorry, but I, I haven't looked through this yet, but you said something about the stone wall permit doesn't apply. Because it's after the fact. I didn't understand that explanation.
If it's not a scenic road, it doesn't, doesn't apply. Originally a scenic road, we can't. Apply that now.
Where is it in the decision? Because I don't think we did the decision incorrectly. I wanted to, I think the decision. Might have referenced. A stone wall from the original subdivision. That's what I'm looking for.
There is a stone wall condition, condition number twenty two. No stone wall shall be removed from the site without applicant owner first obtaining stone wall removal permit. Thank you very much, Ian. So yes, so I will pull this up now. Um, you'll see condition number two. As Ian read, no stone wall shall be removed from the site without the applicant owner first obtaining a stone wall removal permit in accordance with the stone wall bylaws. The stone wall bylaws only apply to scenic roads. This is not a scenic road. Therefore, they don't need to file a permit to remove a stone wall.
Well, I might suggest we go back. Uh, there's some history with this, um, from the original subdivision. So I'm just saying, it, it might apply. And I just, I, I remember when we went through this decision, there was a, it, it was a topic of discussion. So I, I will get myself comfortable with it. Sorry, I won't take up your time.
Is anybody complaining about their stone wall being removed?
Uh, we have not received any complaints on the stone wall that was removed.
Then I don't see what the big deal is. Just sign this guy's thing.
And the stone wall is on a property, right? It's not.
It's on the property, right.
It's not, uh, like us, it's not on the road.
Not on the road, that's why.
Visible to anybody? Is it visible?
Uh, it was visible from the roadway, but this also, this stands that. Priest Lane itself is also not a scenic road. So even if the stone wall was in the right of way, it's not within the right of way of a scenic road. Hmm. And in this case, it was, in my opinion, I, in, in my opinion, it was quite far set back from, at least from where you can see the, the remnants of it are. That's outside the bounds of the, the right of way and it's a right of way of a non-scene road.
Yeah. So what do you, do we need a motion? What do we need on this?
Um, I am recommending that the board, uh, pass a motion to release the bond.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Rich, seconded by Mark White. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Um, we'll take a, a vote. Uh, Chris Doughty.
Doughty, aye.
Mark White.
White, aye.
Cindy Markowitz.
Um, I'm abstaining because I'm just not up to speed fully on this one.
Rich Kuzardi.
Kuzardi, aye.
And Burner, aye. Um, okay, next motion. Who's going to make it?
I motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Rich. And seconded by Mark White. Um, any discussion? All right, Chris Doughty.
Doughty, aye.
Uh, Mark White.
White, aye.
Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz, aye.
Rich Kuzardi.
Kuzardi, aye.
And Burner, aye. Thank you all so much. Thanks, Ian. Thanks, Alec.